Steve, you're on. Got you, that's good.
Matt there.
Matt, you're on. Thank you.
Linda.
Linda is on, very good.
Chris is on.
Chris, you're on. Sheila.
Very happy you're here, Mr. Chairman.
Eric, you're here, thank you. Bob. Snee. Bob Snee. Sheila. Sheila.
Come on in.
Bob Snee.
My speaker is muted.
Okay.
Okay, I signed back on, I thought, I didn't know what was going on, sorry. I tried it, and it didn't seem to work, so. I'm okay now, though, right? Okay.
Yeah, you're on, Chairman, I can hear you. Uh. Okay. I'm waiting for Sheila and Bob Snee.
Present, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Bob, thank you. Sheila. Sheila. Are we able to get you connected? Oh, oh yeah, I got a phone call from Sheila, hold on. Yes, Sheila. Uh, yeah, I'll give them, okay, hold on. Eric. Eric, just invite me back in, Sheila.
I got it, yes.
Okay. Can I answer?
Yes, I can, yes, yes.
All right, yeah, I'm coming back, though. All right. Okay, I think we have all the council people. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna start the, we have three hearings to begin with. So we're gonna begin by call to order. And then we're gonna do pledge to allegiance, and then a moment of silence, so everyone would stand, please, and pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States.
United States of America.
And to the public, to the states.
One nation, one God.
Silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith.
Present.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Ms. Sedman. Ms. Sedman. Mr. Snee.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Your vote.
Here.
Ms. Sedman. Mr. McKinley.
I'm present.
I can see Sheila, but I can't hear her.
Yeah, uh, Sheila. Are you not muted, are you, can you hear us?
Yeah, her mic's cutting out, she's there, but barely faint.
Okay, uh, see if we can help her, Eric, okay? First off, I apologize for the late start. We're in an executive session, and obviously we ran over the time that we had, a lot of, we had some issues that we had to accomplish, so I apologize. We need a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement for the majority of participating in meetings, most to physically present at the meeting, do we have a motion for that?
Some moved, Linda.
Okay, Ms. Howe, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. And now we have a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the terms of the managers, and such should be the state's emergency declaration.
Present.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Okay, Mr. Perry. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yes, Walter.
One?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith. Any, uh, opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Our first public hearing is dealing with the, uh, submission of a budget amendment. The budget amendment is the ordinance of the county of Luzerne amending the 2020 fiscal year budget of Luzerne County, and this is the monies that were received by several different groups, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Department of Justice, Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. And these are monies that are coming into the county, a lot of which is due to the current pandemic. Okay? We'll open up to public for comment in that regard for that particular ordinance. Anyone from the public who would like to speak for that?
Mr. McKinley, it's Walter. Would you please instruct everyone to mute their microphones, because we're getting some feedback? Uh, I see on the, on the participation list, there's a lot of folks who are on the phone and are not muted.
All right, did you hear that? Anybody's on the phone, could you mute your, uh, phone so that we don't get the feedback until we need to vote or something on that, please? Thank you. It looks like the majority of the council is good. Walter, your mic is open, it looks like. Leanne, is your mi- mic open?
It is, do you want me to mute it?
Mute it till we get through the public comment, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Members of the public who would like to speak in regards to the first ordinance that's being presented this evening?
Mr. McKinley, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mark Raabo.
Uh, yes, I am, uh, I want to, no, I have two ques- I have two questions with regards to this ordinance. Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's, uh, background, um, noise. I don't know if you're getting it, but on my end, I'm getting it. Um.
There was some, but I think it's ceased at the moment.
Okay. All right, um, I'm, I have two questions with regards to this ordinance. Number one, uh, will this cover all of the necessary, uh, expenses that are COVID-related regarding the, uh, different, uh, divisions that are impacted by the pandemic, uh, that, uh, the money is coming from these federal agencies? That's my first question. And my second question is, with relation to this funding, um, how will it be utilized as far as the immediate need and as far as the long-term need? Uh, those are my two questions that I have on this, uh, ordinance, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Uh, as far as the questions, obviously, I don't think at this point we know all of the expenses related to the pandemic. Uh, but you can see by the agenda supplemental where some of the expenses will be. And, uh, there's quite a bit of, uh, funding that's involved at this point in time. And obviously, as we go forward, uh, you can see it like in the, from the Community and Economic Development, potential five million for nonprofit human service, municipal assistance, another five million, county expenses, eight million, broadband improvements, four hundred thousand, economic development, tourism, small business, ten million dollars, program administration, two hundred thousand dollars. So there's quite a bit of money that will be involved here, and hopefully, uh, it seems to be programmed for different, uh, parts at this point, but time will tell.
Mr. Chairman, my, my question, I guess I, I phr- I phrased it the wrong way. As far as, I, maybe I, I mis- mis- misstated. As far as, I mean, I know in the previous meeting, Mr. Swett said he was going to submit to you, and, um, members of council, as far as the bills, uh, the expenses that were incurred during the pandemic, as far as, you know.
Yeah, he's been sending some, uh, updates on a regular basis.
So I'm asking as far as, uh, did he submit all of the expenses, uh, that were incurred for, uh, during this, uh, from the, from the point of shutdown till now, or is there still more, uh, bills coming in that weren't, you know, submitted, that?
For Raabo, I think it will probably have bills coming in for quite a period of time. Uh, he has kept us up to date, probably through June thirtieth. Uh, there'll probably be another report after the July reconciliations occurs. But I, he's been doing it on a regular basis, so we're current on that through.
Okay, I just wanted to know if we were, if, if, if Mr. Swett was current with the submission of the expenses?
He's current. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the public, other than, uh, Mr. Raabo? No one else? Do we have a motion to adjourn this public meeting?
Some moved, Walter.
Okay, Mr. Griffith. Kendra, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public, the first public meeting, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Uh, we'll move right into the second public hearing. Uh, we've already done a pledge and a moment of silence, the roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith.
Present.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Ms. Sedman. Ms. Sedman. Mr. Snee.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Your vote.
Here.
Ms. Sedman.
She's here, I'm working with her currently.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. McKinley.
Present. Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement of a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present. Ms. Howe.
Some of.
Hello. Mr. Mantas here. Mr. McKinley.
Well, Mr. Mantas, we're doing, uh, uh, some motions.
I, I, I didn't, I didn't get my comment in on that last one, because somebody had muted me.
We asked twice, and there was no, so you'll have.
Yeah, well, I couldn't get, I could not get my mute off.
Well. You'll have a chance.
All I have.
You'll have a chance before the voting meeting also, Mr. Mantas. Okay? Ms. Howe, you made the motion, do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Perry.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Going down to the next motion. To suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Some moved, Kendra.
Kendra and Mr. Snee, second.
Okay.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith. Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. The second public hearing deals with actually two, uh, ordinances, which are similar. Uh, the first one would be for the elimination, creation of positions in Division sixty, Sheriff's Department, uh, where eliminate two positions and create two deputy sheriff positions. And the second one is for the elimination and creation of two positions, Division thirty, which is elections. So two positions will be eliminated, and two administrative assistants would be created in those positions. Public comment in regards to those two specific ordinances, please. Members of the public who would like to speak now.
Mr. McKinley, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Yes, with regards to, uh, the sheriffs, uh, in terms of the, uh, um, security positions to the Sheriff's Division, um, am I correct to say that, uh, the new positions for the Sheriff's Department, because I'm, as I'm reading this ordinance, uh, is it correct to say that they're going to be, um, you know, as far as with the, under the union, um, position, so that would mean as far as with the, uh, pensions, uh, did this clear with the pension, you know, uh, would this, uh, come in under the retirement board for a new computation for that divi- that division for the, uh, positions, uh, for the Sheriff's Department, would it be, uh, rounded upward? Is, is what I'm asking as far as with these, uh, with these new positions for the sheriffs and for the elections? Uh, would it be, you know, safe to say that, uh, the pensions would, you know, uh, for those, uh, agent, or for those divisions or departments would be, uh, rounded up? Um, because that, that would be, uh, there would be need for more, uh, more funding in the retirement fund? Um, that would be my, uh, my question on that ordinance.
Pretty much, Mr. Raabo, the positions have a net effect uh, on salaries that would be associated with positions being created versus the ones that are being eliminated, so that'd be, uh, just about a negative effect as far as any pension contributions.
Okay, so no effect on, on the, on the funding?
Nothing major, I mean, it might be a couple of dollars one way or the other, but it's not gonna be hundreds or thousands of dollars even.
Okay, I just thought I would, you know, I was just curious as far as how, how the impact would be.
Yep. Other members of the public, please. Others, members of the public, please. Very none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Present, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Going to our third public hearing. Again, we've done the pledge of a moment of silence, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith. Mr. Griffith.
Mr. Griffith. Move on, please.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here. Walter's here.
Okay, we got you.
Linda, yes, here.
Ms. McDermott.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
Yes, present.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Ms. Sedman. Mr. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Vog.
Here.
Ms. Sedman. And Mr. McKinley.
Present. Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement of a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Howe, do you make that motion?
Second, Snee.
Okay. Mr. Snee, seconds, Ms. Howe, did you make that motion? Sorry, do you have a, your mic got muted?
Okay, now hang on.
Well, we can hear you. Um, Ms. Sedman. Ms. Howe, did you make that motion? Your mic is muted, Ms. Howe. Ms. Howe, did you make that motion? Your mic.
I'm sorry, yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, motion indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Sheila, some moved.
Okay, Ms. Sedman, do we have a second?
Second, Perry.
Eric. Mr. Haas. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye, Walter.
Mr. Griffith. And do we have any abstentions, none heard, motion carries? Moving down, this would be an ordinance that would be, uh, for the reduction of the penalty period phase, the fees. Uh, the ten percent would be reduced to zero percent and moved out to the end of the calendar year, which would be December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Members of the public who would like to speak in that regard to this ordinance?
Hi, Jason Carr, Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I would like to inquire from Mr. Pedry, he's been outspoken on many occasions about uh, items that uh, where he's opinionated about a certain direction that he would want the council to vote in. Uh, last week, or the, at the last meeting, uh, manager Pedry, uh, did not offer an opinion either way. But for the citizens of Luzerne County, it's distressing that he doesn't. And I was wondering if Mr. Pedry, manager of, of the county, in charge of three hundred and twenty thousand people that live under the, the charter, if it's possible, he could give a reason why he does not have an opinion, uh, one way or another? And then, secondly, I would like to know from Councilman Vog, Councilman Perry, and Councilwoman Sedman, why they voted no at the last meeting for this ordinance? Thank you.
Manager Pedry, do you want to make a comment this time?
Sure, hold on, Tim, can you hear me?
Uh, now I can.
I'm, I'm muted, yeah, um, listen, I'm, I'm happy to provide any opinion you need me to provide. Um, you know, obviously, taxes is, it's council's job, uh, and, uh, budgets are, are council's job, so you guys could make your decision. Uh, our job as administrations is to tell you how it affects, uh, county administration, so thank you for your time.
Mr. Vog, Mr. Perry, or Ms. Sedman, do you want to make a comment this time?
Ms. Sedman will be happy to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I voted no, because our, our, what we're going to lose, Jason, is a million dollars. And we're not in the, in any shape to lose that million dollars, I don't know where we're gonna be getting a million dollars from. I think also that there was a fairly large percentage of voters that had already paid their taxes. And that, in fact, um, I don't know what the, I, I think it was really, it was kind of about maybe twenty percent. So about eighty percent or more have already paid their taxes. The other thing is, I also think the taxpayers that we are helping in this matter are not necessarily mom and pop, but the people that have the, uh, that are really having some problems right now, because I think probably they paid with their, I would hope, um, their, their checks that they got from the government. They often are, but it's the big taxpayers. How much does Mohegan Sun pay us, Brian, if Brian's on the phone?
I know he's on the phone, but.
I'm on the phone, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, all right.
Brian, how much does Mohegan owe us in taxes?
It's about, it's a little bit over six hundred thousand.
Okay, so I think what we're doing, it, have they paid yet? No, right?
As of three days ago, no. So I have. Go ahead.
I think that Mohegan Sun and several other very large taxpayers, it will be benefiting them more than the actual number of individuals that are going to benefit by it, Jason. That may not be good enough for you, look, I feel terrible about some of the things, but in this case, we already extended it, and I think this extension is in many ways helping the large corporations and banks.
And Mr. Perry or Mr. Vog?
Mr. McKinley, Mr. Perry.
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh, I want to save my comments for the, for later on, but, uh, I'll say it now. I look at the big picture. Uh, we're gonna lose close to a million dollars. And where we making it up? I have no idea. We have a big budget coming up. We certainly want to look at that bu- that, uh, that budget i- in a very, very, uh, close manner. And we can't make up that million dollars. As Brian pointed out today in an email, that if we don't collect this nine point five million dollars in a timely manner, our vendors may not be paid in November and December. And what's gonna happen is, either we're gonna have to have some layoffs, or we're gonna have to increase the trans for next year to make up that million. So I look at the big picture.
Thank you, Mr. Vog.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I completely agree with Sheila and Chris. Um, it's, in my mind, fiscally irresponsible to extend this deadline anymore. Um, I think we did what we had to do, but anymore. We're helping out the, the wrong people, not the actual taxpayers, we're helping out big business like Sheila pointed out. Uh, it's just fiscally irresponsible, so that's why I'm voting no.
Okay. Other members of the public?
Uh, Mr. McKinley.
Yes.
Ron Knapp.
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
Uh, thank you for allowing me to address the, uh, council. My opinion on the ten percent penalty is punitive in nature. If I am neglecting paying my taxes, I'll be subject to losing my house or business, regardless if the penalty is applied or not. It is nothing short of a twisting of the arm of the property owner or business owner. Now, we are dealing with the issue of COVID nineteen and its detrimental effects it is having on what would be responsible taxpaying individuals or businesses, especially business owners that can only operate at twenty-five percent capacity. Does Luzerne County want to add insult to injury to the responsible business owners that are trying to stay afloat? It is not going to be in the interest of Luzerne County to be holding all these businesses after the owners are forced into bankruptcy through no fall of their own. I have a question, it, it's, uh, my understanding is there was a three million dollar surplus to the bu- budget last year. Uh, and you can confirm that after I make this, uh, viewpoint. Uh, one thing is the strong economy which this coun- county and state enjoyed for three and a half years before COVID arrived. Things were so much are so much on the positive track that the county felt comfortable handing out hefty raises to county employees. This is only possible because of the robust economy produced out of Washington. If the budget had been permitted to be opened and reexamined when newly elected council members took office at request of the need to increase taxes would have been averted. Now, with higher taxes handed down, and also school taxes soon to be arriving in the mail, it is surely something the taxpayers won't soon forget and will be considering when going to vote on the next county council member's seat opening. The ten percent penalty is nothing short of a money grab, money which many do not have to spare currently because of COVID nineteen. So in regards to the three million dollar surplus, is that a fact? Mr. McKinley.
Ms. Knapp.
Yeah, I'm ask, I asked a question.
Yeah, I heard you, but you're done?
I'm completed yet.
Okay. I think if you were, uh, part of the meeting two weeks ago, you heard the auditor tell you that it was a, a, approximately a three million dollar, give or take, surplus, that's correct. Okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. McKinley, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Hey, Mr. Raabo.
Yes, um, I would like to, first of all, answer both what, follow up with what Mr. Knapp said about the, um, the twenty-five percent, uh, reduct- or to capacity for restaurant owners and, uh, bars, bar owners. Um, a, uh, gentleman by the name of John Longstreet, uh, president and CEO of the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association, told the state lawmakers on Tuesday that Governor Wolf- and Lodging Association, told the state lawmakers on Tuesday that Governor Wolf's recent virus mitigation order that limits capacity for those businesses to 25% could cause 7,500 restaurants across the state to close. Now, based on that reality, and that, you know, that assertion made by the Restaurant and Lodging Association president, how many of them are going to be in Luzerne County that we lose? I mean, we don't know that. I mean, you don't know that. I don't know that. So, I mean, we're basically in the in the financial wilderness when it comes to this. Okay? Secondly, Mr. Councilman Perry, Councilwoman Sedman brought up, where do we get the $1 million from? I can I can give you a solution to that problem right now. I brought it up during the budget meeting last year. The UDAG money, there's $6 million out of a $14 million carry forward line item in the budget that can be used for, and actually, the UDAG money was for business relief during the flood. Okay? Because that was an unnatural occurrence. So it's safe to say that the COVID-19 crisis is by definition an unnatural occurrence. So therefore, I think, I mean, you could basically call up HUD and say, hey, look, we got $6 million here. Let's, we would like to use 1 million of that to help our struggling business owners. So I think that that could be used for that purpose. So that would solve that problem. So to finish, to conclude, Mr. McGinley, I think that, you know, we need to help out not only, and I'm not saying this for myself, I'm saying this for the business owners and for those those people, those people who are owners of properties that have elderly and disabled people, because they're they're not being kicked out of their homes because of the non eviction order, but those property owners still have to pay those bills. So and those property tax bills that you guys are charging. So those are the people that we have to worry about. I'm not saying we should help Mohican Sun.
Okay. Uh-oh.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, who's that? Who's speaking?
Hello?
Hello, who's speaking?
This is Mark Raabo speaking.
All right. Mr. Raabo, you're you're you lapped your time.
Yeah, I'm finished. Yeah, I'm finished.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? If not, do we have a motion?
Well, Mr. McGinley, I it's Linda. I would just like to to make a comment on this.
Go ahead.
It's, yes. I understand that, you know, this, the penalty monies are budgeted, and, you know, we do pass a balanced budget with an expectation for revenue and expenses. And it might cause an issue with the balanced budget, but I do have to say that the point that was raised about the $3 million surplus should address any kind of cash flow issue that might arise from this. And I think that especially since this, we are in the middle of, I don't know if it's a second wave or continued first big wave, that I would rather err on the side of caution and help the people that we can, because we really don't know what's in store in the next two months for people. I do think our cash flow should be okay, because we do have that $3 million surplus. And so, again, while I realize that it would put a little hole in the budget, I think that in the bigger picture, the cash flow is what we need to be concerned about. Thank you.
Okay.
And if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Os.
Yeah, I appreciate the colleagues' comments that it might disproportionately help out some of our bigger businesses here. But, you know, when you look at the federal level, you know, they're talking about passing another round of cares and relief to the people, and essentially, we're in the same place. Yes, we'll you'll, our primary goal is to help those people that need it most, but it's 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 going to happen. You're going to you're going to help people that don't necessarily need to be helped. But again, I think our concern is really helping those struggling businesses and/or individuals and/or families that could use every penny during this time, and the future's very uncertain here. And I really wish we would have taken a better look at this back in April. I think it would have been more appropriate to do it then. And I, you know, you look at this, it's, there's still a lot of uncertainty out there. So I just encourage the members to really support this. Think about the people who still truly are struggling out there and who are going to be struggling for some time. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Regarding the comment that was made about the Mohican Sun Arena, the Mohican Sun's been closed for six months, oh, almost six months. Lack of Avenue, now they're open, but at probably 25 to 30% capacity. They have the ability to hire thousands of people from Luzerne County who work there. And I certainly understand the situation where a lot of people say, well, big business shouldn't be one we're helping, but when it comes time to give Koz's out, we're not we're not bashful about giving a Koz to a big business. And I think this is a time when the people of the county need to need the help of county council to say, you know, we understand. And I certainly understand, you know, with the situation we have with a million dollar loss, I would like to see the number of big businesses that haven't paid their taxes, as has been alluded to by members of council. If there's a lot of those big businesses that haven't paid them now, that would have paid them anyway in penalty, I think it might be a habitual thing for them. Maybe they always paid in penalty. I don't really know. But I don't think that should be the driving force behind whether we accept this ordinance or not. I think what's important is that these are these are our neighbors, these are people who have issues that of no fault of their own. And as Mr. Knapp said, this is a penalty. This is this is like found money theoretically, number one, but more importantly, it's, I think it's punitive. I don't I don't agree with penalties at all. I think if we want people to pay their bills early, let's give them incentive to pay them early. Let's not penalize them for paying late. Obviously, we had the parking lots just recently paved at Penn Place, and we had the, not Penn Place, but over at the Children and Youth Building, and we had them paved across the street from the courthouse. I didn't see anybody stopping spending money on those projects saying, hey, you know what? We we don't have the money for that. And and that's what people see. Appearance is everything. And when people drive by the courthouse to see a brand new parking lot paved, and they drive by the services building and see a brand new parking lot, they're not saying, well, you know what, that was money that was planned in capital plan. What they say is, they can't give us a break on our 10% penalty, but they can pave parking lots. So I think it's an important thing that we can do for the people at this time through no fault of their own, and I would encourage a yes vote on the ordinance when it comes up.
Okay. Do we have a motion for adjournment of the public meeting?
Walter makes the motion.
Mr. Griffin, do we have a second for Mr. Griffin?
Chris, seconds.
Mr. Perry, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Okay. Moving right into the voting session agenda. We'll begin with the call to order, which we'll do right now, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance along by moment of silence, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we have a moment of silence for Judge Andrew Barilla?
Yes, we should. A moment of silence will be in honor of former Magisterial Judge Andrew Barilla. Okay, first we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance. Now a moment of silence in honor of former Magisterial Judge Andrew Barilla. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Hus? Mr. Hus? Mr. Hus? Is that Mr. Husman?
Yeah, that was Mr. Hus, if you could speak up a little bit, please. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Hus?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you.
All present.
Very good. Mr. Doolker, you want to comment about the executive session, please?
Yes, Council met an executive session today from 5:00 PM until 5:30. Received a report regarding two pieces of litigation. One was the Trump campaign versus Luzerne County Board of Elections, and the second was Martin versus Luzerne County. No deliberations took place, and no decisions were made.
Thank you. I do think, though, Mr. Doolker, I think we went overtime. We went past the 5:30.
You're right.
So 4:45, 5:45 or so. Going down the next item there, retirements, and we have many people on our list this evening. Richard Gavlick, who worked in the prison as supply clerk. Ms. Joyce, who worked as a deputy sheriff. Ms. Karavich, who was also a correction officer at the prison. Elizabeth Kenter, who worked in the area aging. Mr. Dardone, who worked in children and youth services. Ms. Schnelly, who worked in the district attorney's office. Ms. Skopak, who was a caseworker in children and youth services. And Mary Walls, who had worked in the corners office for many years. Again, we'll send them a letter of congratulations and wish them good luck in their retirement. additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra. Can I make a comment on the retirements and recognitions?
Absolutely, go ahead.
While we thank everybody who's retiring for their service to the county, I just want to give a special shout out to Erin Joyce from the Sheriff's Department. I think she's an example of not just doing her job, but a great person for Luzerne County, from going into schools and teaching kids about the dangers of drugs and alcohol and smoking, to Camp Cadet and the junior deputy program. I just wanted to to thank her.
Thank you for the commentary. Again, we're down to additions or deletions. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Send them.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Hus, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Ms. Hus, do you make the motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement?
I make that motion, yes.
Ms. Hus makes the motion. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Down to the second motion, suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings. You would send that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Send them.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second? Ms. Kendra? Ms. Radel?
Yes.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition?
Yes, Walter.
Mr. Griffin, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. We're now at public comment regarding agenda items, please. People from the members of the public who would like to speak in regards to items that are on the agenda.
Brian Scheiner.
Go ahead, Mr. Scheiner.
On items four and five, to adopt an ordinance amending the 2020 position budget, I would hope council does vote in favor of doing so, as it is necessary that we avoid, to do so that we avoid what happened in a prior year with somebody being hired in the Election Bureau, and then the funding wasn't there because council didn't legislatively approve the position and the funding for it. But during this, I would hope that Manager Pedri will explain how we're going to continue on with only two inspectors instead of the four we've always had. I think that's a difficult task to perform. I don't know. Maybe he can offer the insight as to why he feels we can now function with only two inspectors. On item number five, there were actually five votes opposed at the last meeting. It was Mr. Perry, Ms. Sedman, Mr. Vog, Mr. Schnee, and Mr. McGinley. I can understand what Ms. Sedman is saying and the others, but out of the 20% remaining due in property taxes, there's no way to know whether it's mom and pop next door or a large corporation. But everyone has been affected, big business, small business, and individuals by this pandemic. And in the past, as Mr. Griffin pointed out, this council has been very, very willing to give out Koz's, LRTs, TIFs, all kinds of discounts to big business. Why there's a sudden concern is beyond me. The only thing I see it is as being the greed to collect that penalty. And I think considering these circumstances, that needs to be let go, and this needs to be passed and knock that 10% penalty off for the rest of this year. Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the public who would like to speak at this time?
Yes, Mark Raabo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Yes, in regards to number six for the reduction of the penalty period, going off of what I said during the public hearing, under Division 30 Administrative Services, line item 450.80, carry forward, $13,317,500. Of that money, 6 million is from the UDAG money. So whether you use, whether the council chooses to go off of the surplus, as Councilwoman Hus spoke about, and Councilman Griffith spoke about, and Mr. Knapp spoke about, or whether you use the UDAG money, 1 million out of the UDAG money to cover that, you know, that penalty, you know, whether or not you use from either pool of money, that's that's up to the council. But don't, you know, don't try to say that the 10% is necessary and justifiable during this unprecedented time. I mean, we all agree that this is an unprecedented time. This is not, this is not ordinary. This is very out of the ordinary. So please consider the the small business owners, the restaurant owners, the bar owners that that are just that are just struggling because the governor restricted to 25% and also with regards to landlords who are struggling because...
Hello? Mr. Raabo?
Hello?
Mr. Raabo?
Hello?
Mr. Raabo?
Mr. Matt is here?
Yeah, but Mr. Raabo was speaking, Mr. Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was.
Go ahead.
I was muted for some reason.
Go ahead.
So my, to finish off, Mr. Chairman, all I'm saying is, with respect to, this is not of the council's making, or the manager's making, or the public's making. The governor makes the rules during this pandemic. We all know that. So, I mean, I think what we, you know, council should do, they have a choice. You could either be serve the people as the elected officials of this county, or be willing lapdogs to authoritarian tyrant like Tom Wolfe. I mean, the choice is in in your hands, Mr. Chairman and members of council. You know, it's your vote.
Thank you.
So please make it a good one. Thank you.
Mr. Matta?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, my comment is about that, the 10% also, but I'd like to find out two things. The first thing is, is there a line item on the budget for COVID money? And the second thing is, is there a line item on the budget for the rainwater tax? And why is Mr. Pedri so reluctant about putting money for the rainwater tax? Is there some kind of a backdoor smoke room, smoke room deal going on with Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority that we don't know about? Or is he just going to be defining... Or is he just going to be defying and not pay it? And the county is going to be stuck with a big bill down the road? I don't understand this. If you could give Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority a break on money from the county, why can't you give the people a break for their taxes? So that they could have money in their pockets to pay their own bills? Because this Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority situation with the rain tax is still there. There's still some...
That's not on the agenda, though.
Not on the agenda, it's not on the agenda.
Your first question is, is part of the first ordinance on the agenda, the monies that are coming through the CARES Act to support expenses for the pandemic?
Correct. Is there a line item on the budget for that?
If we pass the ordinance, there's going to be line items in the budget.
All right, so they put a line item on the budget for that. But the example that I'm using to bring the point out is, is there a line item on the budget for Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority? Yes or no?
That is not, that is not part of the agenda this evening. You can ask that when we get to the end of the voting session.
So that's what confuses me because they have a line item on the budget.
Like I say, you could ask that at the end and we can see what's available in the budget. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll move down to the first item, motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th meeting. Someone was trying to speak, I don't know who it was. I'm sorry. Motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th meeting?
Presented, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Walter, second.
Mr. Griffith, thank you. On the question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Urban.
Mr. Urban, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Old business?
Mr. McGinley, under old business, I saw your email regarding the codification, RFP.
Right.
Our charter clearly states in our charter in 216 that the codification is done by the clerk de council. I don't understand why the Office of Law is involved in that process.
No, I asked them to research the, and get the RFP that was used in 2014. So we could use that as a model to go forward to do a new RFP to do the codification.
Okay, very good.
That's their only involvement.
Thank you very much, appreciate the clarification.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, first item on the agenda, motion to adopt the ordinance, amend the 2020 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. And that was the first public hearing that we had this evening. And that was the monies that was involved from all the different agencies in the state, much of which was the CARES money. Do we have a motion?
So move. Chris.
Mr. Perry, do we have a second?
Sheila.
This segment. On the question?
Mr. McGinnam, have you heard on this?
Excuse me? What was that?
Have you heard on this, Dave Pedri? This is Dave Pedri, can I be heard on this one?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Yes, you may, go ahead on the question.
Thank you, counsel. Before, thank you, counsel, before you is an ordinance to amend the 2020 budget. Is to reflect the revenue and expense funding for the increase in funding from various funding sources related to COVID-19. So the county has been thankfully supported by the state and the federal authorities in order to provide some funding back to Luzerne County citizens and back to Luzerne County businesses. These ordinances that is in front of you today and these grants will allow the county to properly budget for these. And I'm going to review them quickly with you now. The first one in front of you, and this is all in the same ordinance, it's all included in the same one. The first grant is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. This is the first money that was announced way back in March, the first set of funding that was announced. This is C D B G money, COVID money. It has to go for nonprofits such as the homeless projects or the food shelters. This is the $250,000 that the county is able to provide to our assistance to our nursing homes that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. These individuals has a $2 million number, that goes through our community development department and gets that money on the street. The next two, I'll take the second one and the fourth one here together. The U.S. Department of Justice Assistance Revenue, which is federal money, and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Review. Both of those are provided by, the first one by the federal authorities, the second by the state for law enforcement. So what these expenses are to go for are for expenses of law enforcement in order to fight COVID, the coronavirus. Couple of different things about this. Nobody just gets a check because they want a check. And they just get a $1,000 check or a $5,000 check or anything along those lines. Every single one of these expenses, we need an invoice for or a payment authorization for from an organization. For example, on the P C C D grant on the bottom of your page, there's $41,000 that's going to our municipalities for their police departments. Those police departments purchase things like masks, clean their cars, provided assistance to their citizens, provide all the defoggers to make sure that their people are safe and secure. All of those things are taken care of in these two grants. So those two grants are over about $235,000 that go to our law enforcement agencies. And the final one is the big one, 28.6 million from the federal stimulus money. Okay, so this is the federal CARES money, not stimulus money, excuse me, the federal CARES money. So this project, we sat down with the state, we reviewed, we came up with a budget that where we could be on this. Number one, the first thing we're looking at is, if you look at the county COVID expenses, that $8 million, that's money that all goes back to the county for money that we have already expended or will expend. Everything that goes to this money goes for three things. Plan for, prepare for, or respond to. Plan for, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus. So I can't just say, hey, listen, there's a hole in our budget. We're not collecting our tax money or something along those lines. Can we fill it up with this? Absolutely not. It has to go to plan for, prepare for, or respond to. Here are some things that we can use this money for, and we plan to use this money for if council approves it. Number one will be all of the reimbursement for all the employees that I had to send over to the election bureau to assist them with the mail-in ballots. If you recall, we had over 70 employees working over there, some of them from other county departments. We can now reimburse the county for those funds and it will all be paid out of this. In addition, we can pay IT. So we're working on various issues. Work from home is a big deal, remote workforce is a big deal. So we're talking laptops and air packs for the internet. And all the IT support needed for, needed for the work from home. In addition, we're allowed to do some capital improvements. And we are working on some for the Luzerne County Correctional Facility in order to, we have an interesting project going on right now that we're working with the state on to see if it gets approved. But what it would do is it would allow for the building of a bathroom onto the Luzerne County Correctional Facility gym, as well as heating and air conditioning on Luzerne County Correctional Facility gym. So if there is a second wave and we do have an outbreak at the Luzerne County Correctional Facility, we will be able to staff, to put actually inmates, set up beds in the gym. This is something that we haven't done. Every single dime of this money, though, the P C C, all this money that we're talking about, 28.6 million, has to be spent by December 30th of 2020. That is a quick turnaround, is a very quick turn. So we got to move very, very quickly on this and we're working with those people on it. So that's the county expenses. The next thing that in front of you that I want to talk about is municipal COVID assistance program. This is almost the exact same things that the county is going through. But we're going to be able to provide these funds directly to municipalities. The way we have it set up is of the $5 million that's been allocated, we went by a per capita breakdown. So, and each of those municipalities have a budget based upon their per capita. Obviously, for example, Wokesbury City has the biggest number of employees, of citizens. So those individuals, they would have the biggest budget. And we take that budget and we provide it to Wokesbury City. They would then have to provide invoices or payment authorization to say, yes, we did these following things in order to plan for, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus. And that's a great opportunity for us to provide needed assistance to every single Luzerne County municipality, all 76. The next thing I want to talk about is the broadband improvements. This is a big deal for the county. So we have allocated $400,000 for broadband improvements. Now, the issue is that we have to provide broadband improvements. These fundings can only be used for low to moderate income areas. So the best place, we sat down with our consultants and reviewed everything, the best place to actually do this is in Freeland, Pennsylvania. What is happening is in Freeland, Pennsylvania is we are putting up a new tower for the 911 project for $400,000. We can use these funds in order to make those changes to the Freeland Tower for $400,000. This alleviates the Luzerne County Council to having to allocate an additional $400,000 to next year's debt service. So we can take this year's federal stimulus, federal CARES money, provide it for that tower in Freeland, and then take that money off of our debt service for next year. It's a win-win all around. Provided services to the people within the guidelines and as well as we provide that information, as well as we provide those fundings back to the citizens. The final two things are the Economic Development Tourism Small Business Assistance Program to a tune of $10 million and the non-for-profit Human Services Provider Program. So we're going to be marketing our program as we work with, as the state's program. We're going to be working with Penns Northeast, who has been the region's economic development provider, they're recognized by the state in order to provide this assistance. This will be a focus on small businesses, 25 employees or less. Let's be honest, we want to help the mom and pop stores out here, we want to help the restaurants. We want to help the businesses get back on their feet. So how do we do it? We do it by focusing on the smaller businesses. Penns Northeast will have to provide a website and a call center so people can call and get questions and get the information out. The most important thing is we're going to do it as quickly as possible to get this money on the street to our citizens and to our small businesses. As for the non-for-profit Human Services Provider Assistance Program, it will go for just that, our 501(c)(3)'s and our human services providers who are providing the needed assistance to the people who need it most. The people who need food, the people who are doing all of those things, they'll be there. In addition, we are able to allocate over $400,000 for youth sports leagues. So what's happening is there's youth sports league opening up across Luzerne County, a lot of kids are playing. I want to make sure that every single youth sports league has necessary funding to buy P P E, which means buy masks, buy hand sanitizer, do all the different things to make sure our kids are safe and most importantly, they get outside and they're part of those things. This will be an application process, everything will be processed. It has to be done with a receipt and payment invoice. We're going to go off of state guidelines and we're going to be moving as quickly as possible. So council, it's a lot to take and understand it. But it's a good thing because we're going to get our money out to the people who need it most. That's the citizens of Luzerne County. And if there's any questions, I'll take them now.
Other questions? I do have myself, broadband improvement. I think that's a critical element for the county. I think we surveyed our county and looked at some of the areas. There are many areas that do not have the type of broadband connectivity that people need in order to be able to survive in this kind of pandemic as far as, you know, be able to use their internet, be able to get their cell phone, et cetera. I would like to see actually more money appropriated for broadband improvement, particularly as you indicated, low-income areas. I'm sure there's areas in the county that would qualify. But yours, I think what you said, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pedri, this is exactly for one tower, it sounds like, in the Freeland area, greater Freeland area? Is that right? Mr. Pedri? You're muted.
I couldn't get myself off mute, I couldn't get myself off mute, sorry, yeah. This will go for one tower in the Freeland area.
Are there other towers that might be eligible for that kind of assistance?
According to our consultant, unfortunately, there's specific guidelines on what this broadband money can be used for, and that was the one that was targeted. I'll sit down with them again because I would like to provide as much assistance as possible to the broadband. But that's an opportunity for us in Freeland in order to fix that tower as well as take the money off of debt service.
And I think that's great.
Mr. Chairman?
If we could possibly look and see if there's other, we can make some adjustments here that might be helpful. Mr. Haas, I think you wanted to chime in?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I was repetitive there, if you heard me.
Go ahead.
No, no, hats off to Mr. Pedri for the tower slash broadband, it's a wonderful use of the funds. And I think when we look at the acceptable uses here, we really want, and I'm sure you're doing it, Dave, I'm sure you're looking under every corner that you can. And I want to know specifically, the extra monies we're paying for the poll workers, for the judge of elections, for the minority majority inspectors, clerks and stuff like that, is that an acceptable use of the COVID funds? Because I know we've had an issue for a long time about getting people out before the panic. Even now, I know it's very difficult. So we're paying people a little extra to come out? Is that acceptable?
I don't know if that's included in the entire amount, Harry, but I will track that down for you. The biggest number is obviously the number that we've paid for elections. That we put all that money out there. I don't know if that specific thing is part of it, but I will track that down for you and make sure. We put a ton of money into elections this year for the June election. I mean, like I was telling my friend the other day about how, you know, we're in the middle of this pandemic, everybody's doing their best, everybody's trying their best, everybody's doing everything possible, then we had to have an election in the middle of it. And then, you know, but we did it and, you know, but the good thing is we're able to reimburse the county for those funds. I will track that down specifically for you, though, Harry.
Yeah, and also about the ballot application postage, is that acceptable? Thing to claim with the CARES funds?
Correct. So we did confirm that the, I sent, as you know, I sent a letter out to the, an application to every single Luzerne County registered voter.
Yeah.
Every, you know, that amount will be able to be covered by this.
I mean, I just, and I'm sure management's doing that, but we can look at every avenue, everything that is appropriately due to us, I think that's our job right now during this time. And, you know, we're not looking to balance the books off the federal funds, but at the same time, it's there for a purpose. And if it's an appropriate use, I think the council greatly supports that, so keep up the good work.
Counselor Haas, we've been at this, listen, you and I have been at this for a lot of years. We finally got some federal and state funds. We're going to use every dime we possibly can get.
Don't worry, they'll find new ways for us to spend it, I'm sure, but thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
So I just want to make sure that we, you know, before passing this that we have multiple G L accounts that are specific just for this COVID funding, that none of this money gets lumped into any normal budget line items, that they are segregated from all the, you know, normal, like I said, you know, general fund line items. So we can track this a lot more closely. And regarding the broadband improvements, I know, you know, it's also, there's some guidelines in there that says it can be used for distant learning, telehealth, telework and remote business operations. So, you know, I just wanted to expand upon that. I mean, if you're only limiting it to Freeland, it's kind of not going all over the place. And we have many rural areas within the county that could add, you know, we can add additional service. And one other final point, getting back to, you know, like working from home, jet packs and things like that, I mean, how many people, you know, what's your breakdown on people where you need to actually supply them with something because they don't have a home network? And if some people had a certain salary, why would we pay for them to have an AirCard or something like that? Because, you know, in some cases, they should be able to afford their own or we should make it a set amount that they might get a little stipend or something like that, like the normal business world and not reimburse the entire bill. And then lastly, looking at the breakdown, can we separate the tourism out of the small business and economic development part? You know, you have $10 million lumped in that like three category type of segment there. And I would think small business assistance versus tourism are two different things. I don't really think there's much tourism going on at the moment. And then, you know, obviously, we'd be looking at economic development and keeping small business there. Also, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Urban, I mean, I'm going to go, I'm going to go.
And I was going to say, you know... And I was going to say, you know, as the-
Those are the state, those are the state categories. So I went off exactly with the state categories, not economic development tourism, small business. I would say this, 90% of the money, if not the majority of the money, is going to go to small business assistance and economic development. I mean, I fully understand, but that's the, those are the breakdowns the state gave us. So as you know, we're going to try to play with their set of rules if possible and move from there.
And then, if we can, like broadband improvements, do we have anything in place that, where the broadband improvements can go into maybe like the nursing home environment to allow those residents to be able to communicate with their relatives and not be a prisoner under like Governor Wolf's edicts in a sense? So, you know, so they can actually get in touch with their family members remotely instead of, you know, being behind plenty glass or doors and, you know, a nursing home shouldn't be like a prison. Try to help them out so they can actually communicate with their loved ones. You know, that would be something else to think about.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila.
Yes.
David, the, what we're giving in small business loans or grants, that, will, will some of that be used to help the bar owners, the restaurant owners, the small businesses that the members of the public had talked about in terms of potential losses, bankruptcy, those kinds of things, to keep them from going ahead with that? Keep them climbing?
Correct. This is, what we are going to be gearing this, this funding for is for businesses with 25 employees or less. So those are the restaurants, those are the bars, those are the Loser and County businesses. I'm not interested in corporate welfare. I'm not interested in sending some check to some, some big company somewhere else. I want to help out a small place in Larksville, Pennsylvania, and I want to make sure that they keep their doors open. And I think this grant, that, this process that we have an ability to do this is a way to get across that line.
Yeah, it would be nice if the public, some of the people that talked about us being greedy and et cetera, could hear that too, that we are utilizing funds to help them.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, Walter?
Go ahead.
Dave, could you tell me, where did these, are these numbers like provided to us by the state, or are these numbers that we came up with as part of the COVID-19 issue that that's where these numbers came from?
It's a little bit of both. So we sat down with our team and came up with our numbers, but then we sat down with the state who recommended certain categories and certain numbers and in order for them to, them to approve it. So we kind of worked it as best we possibly could here.
So do you know, do you know, like, for like, particularly in the $28 million category, it says that, you know, do we know exactly how much COVID-19 money that we're going to need for reimbursement for those expenses? Or is this just something like you figured, because it's obviously not all in yet, right?
All is in for right now. All is, all is in for right now, for everything that we have in, but there are some things that we're working on. For example, the LCCF gym, I'm still working with the state to see if that would be approved or not in order to fix that project, that that can be something. That's, that's something that we're continually working on, that we've budgeted money for that within that $8 million, but we're not out of that, we're not out of the woods there on that one.
So when we look at the U.S. Department of Justice Assistance Revenue, it says correctional facility, $42,056, is that money that we, our COVID-related, all of that money?
Correct. Every single dime.
So why is not, so why do we not have a COVID-19 line item in the budget that designated that, where is that expense at that we could see?
I'm assuming that that's what you're doing tonight.
But, but you say you already incurred that money, right?
The line item, Walter. Once we create a budget amendment, they'll put a line item in the budget to represent what is passed hopefully this evening.
Right, so my question is, where's that line item now? Where's those expenses now in the, in the budget?
Oh, Mark paid for it out of his supply budget, but we get to be reimbursed for that.
So it's listed in New World Under Supplies, $42,056?
I couldn't tell you the line item. I'll have to get the information, Walter, I apologize, but he paid for it out of his current budget.
Okay, and the same with the sheriffs and all, so these are all COVID-related, and I think that gets to Councilman Urban's question is, we don't have COVID-19 line items in the budget, which, you know, I brought up before, that I think that should have been created back in March or April when we figured out we were going to get reimbursement, is to create that account. So any receipts that came in, we could run, and I don't agree with running a negative balance on a budgeted line item like we're doing in elections, but I think that would have been a better way to track it than to throw it into supplies and then have to pull it back out at a later date. So we don't have any line items for revenue for any of this money, and we don't have any line items for expenses that could clearly have been created already, correct?
I think that's what you're doing tonight.
Fine. Some of these accounts are created, I think we talked before, the COVID line items are created. My team and Michelle Sparish are going through to make sure that things are hitting the COVID line items. If something hits supplies because it was a cleaning product and it should be for COVID, we'll move it to the COVID line item. The whole point of the exercise was to get everything COVID-related in the COVID line items, and once council passes this budget to have the $28.6 million sorts of funds, so there's budgeted money with budgeted dollars so they match up. We're in the same boat as every other municipality, not just county. It's new for the county, it's new for the state, everybody's in the middle of it at once. I'm working with other counties, I'm working with PFM on how they're accounting for it. So you will see the revenue and the expenses, and it will be segregated, and that's why we put a new, a line, if you look at it, for the $28.6 million, Fund 125, Budget and Finance created a brand-new fund just for the biggest share of the cares money.
And that's, that's listed as the COVID-19 revenue side, right?
Correct.
And that's, that's, that's what I think Councilman Urban was alluding to as well as myself, is that we want to make sure that somewhere along, if it's in supplies right now, you know, I understand we could pull some of that stuff out, and that's, we just want to make sure we have accurate accounting of that, of that, of that money. And I'm not doubting that that's going to happen. I would just think that we probably should have had those accounts created already, and then we would be just a matter of dispersing the money into the line item account. But that clarifies the money, but so, so this money has to be all allocated for COVID-19 disaster-related money?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That, that answers my question. I would much rather see us have a line item, for instance, for expenses, say, Loser and County Courts in probation, COVID-19. So that way, we know that that $86,781 is actually used for that purpose, and then you could look at the detail on that and see that, but whatever way, you know, Budget and Finance sets it up, I'm sure it'll be clear enough that we'll be able to figure it out. Thanks.
Other questions? If not, we have a motion by Mr. Perry, second by Ms. Sigmund, to adopt the ordinance as presented. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Ms. McDermott?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Is that yes?
Yes. Sorry.
Mr. Vog?
Yeah.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Moving down to the second agenda item, we have a motion to adopt the resolution appoint a member to the Loser and County Transportation Authority. As you know from our last meeting, we had a member of that authority submit a letter of resignation, which we accepted at that meeting. So tonight, we have an opportunity to fill that position and complete that term. So do we have a motion to open nominations?
So moved, Kendra.
So moved.
Who was, who was second? Who was second there? Who followed, Ms. Kendra?
Urban was second.
Mr. Urban, very good. All in favor of nominations being opened indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstentions, unheard, motion carries, nominations are now open.
Is that the name of Jeff Kubitz?
Jeff Kubitz. That's Mr. Schnee. Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Chris.
Ms. Perry, okay.
I nominate, I nominate John Young.
I'll second.
John Young?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Griffith makes a nomination. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, McDermott.
And Ms. McDermott?
I nominate Tom Bindus.
Tom Bindus. Ms. Houck, do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Yes, Sheila.
Sigmund?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Close, Ms. Chairman.
Ms. McDermott, and who is second, Mr. Vog? Or Mr. Perry?
And that was Mr. Haas.
Mr. Haas, thank you. All in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, unheard, motion carries. We now have three people who have been nominated and second. Mr. Jeffrey Kubitz, Mr. John Young, and Mr. Thomas Bindus. Roll call, indicate the person that you're supporting for the position.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Young.
Ms. Houck?
Bindus.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Young.
Mr. Perry?
Kubitz.
Ms. Radel?
Mr. Young.
Ms. Sedman?
Tom Bindus.
Mr. Schnee?
Kubitz.
Mr. Urban?
Young.
Mr. Vog?
Mr. Bindus.
Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Young.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Bindus.
Five for Young, four for Bindus, two for Kubitz.
Okay. So Mr. Kubitz is eliminated because he had the least number of votes. So we go to the second round, and we have Mr. Young, John Young, and Mr. Tom Bindus. Repeat the roll call, please indicate which of those two candidates you support.
Ms. Houck?
Bindus.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Young.
Mr. Perry?
Bindus.
Ms. Radel?
Young.
Ms. Sedman?
Bindus.
Mr. Schnee?
Bindus.
Mr. Urban?
Young.
Mr. Vog?
Bindus.
Mr. Griffith?
Young.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Young.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Bindus.
Six for Bindus, five for Young.
Okay. And now we have to vote on a resolution appointing Mr. Bindus to Loser and County Transportation Authority to complete the term of office of Mr. Conway.
So moved. Linda?
Ms. Houck? Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Sheila.
Okay. Sigmund? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to number three. We have a motion to reduce the ordinance amending the Loser and County zoning map to rezone one parcel of the property totaling 413 acres, allowing burial from R1 single-family residence zone, Highway Business District B3 Zone.
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. Houck, okay. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number four. Motion to adopt the ordinance to amend the 2020 position budget legislative, authorize the elimination and creation of positions in Division 60, Department 4197, which is the Sheriff's Department. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Griffith? Another question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Perry?
I have an opinion from the Office of Law concerning the position budget. If they don't mind.
Okay. Mr. Luca?
Yeah, I'm, we had, I mean, I know right from the beginning when, when the administrative code was first adopted, there's been a number of discussions over the years regarding trying to enforce a, what's called a position budget. I, I don't know really, I don't even remember where that term came from. But it's the position of the Office of Law, and it has been from the inception of the Home Rule Government, that trying to enforce any sort of position budget, if that's what we're calling it, would be a violation of the separation of powers that were clearly intended in the Charter. I mean, I was involved very early on even with, very familiar, I should say, with the discussions that went on as to why the, the Home Rule Government was designed the way it was. And one of the, one of the criticisms of the way that, that the county commissioner form of government, of the county commissioner form of government was the fact that you had executive and legislative power all held in the same governing body. It was clear that, that the government, as stated by the Government Study Commission, and really as laid out in the Charter, that legislative authority was put in the hands of the County Council. Executive authority for day-to-day operations was put, given the authority for that was given to the County Manager. You know, you have to look at, at positions or jobs the same as you would any other resource in county government. And I guess, especially with no authority for this type of action in the Charter, I don't know where you would draw the line. I mean, no disrespect to county employees, of which I'm one, but this has to be, county employees have to be looked at like any other resource. The number of copiers that, that are implied in a, in a budget when the County Manager presents the requirements for, or requests for budgeted amounts during budget hearings. The number of boxes of paper. Are we, are we going to have budget amendments every time the County Manager, or one of those in his charge in the executive branch decides to not purchase a box of paper? And that's really what we're talking about here. The, the Charter, the way it's designed separating legislative and executive branches really was intended to eliminate what was perceived as Uh, and that's really what we're talking about here. The, uh, the Charter, uh, the way it's designed separating legislative and executive branches, uh, really was intended to eliminate what was perceived as, uh, opportunities for patronage. Um, with, uh, elected officials, um, uh, under the old government, uh, at least the perception was that, uh, elected officials, uh, engaged in patronage. They separated out and, and gave the power to create. They eliminated the, uh, um, Salary Board, uh, which used to consist of elected officials, um, and instead gave that authority to create and eliminate, uh, positions, uh, to an appointed county manager. So this is, uh, would be heading down a very dangerous path. Uh, it would be heading down a path where, uh, in my opinion, and that of, uh, the Office of Law, uh, a path that would be infringing on the executive authority of not only this county manager, uh, Mr. Pedri, but also, uh, county managers in perpetuity who hold that position. So it's, it remains, uh, the position of the Office of Law, um, that, uh, trying to enforce any ability to, by council, to have authority over creation or elimination of positions would be a violation of the Charter.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, yeah, Linda, I do have comments. Okay. Um, and I understand, uh, the idea of a salary board, which, uh, county councils certainly does not want to be. However, uh, the Administrative Code does, um, include a position budget that is tied to the budget. And while the Charter does not, uh, provide for the county council to be a salary board, it does require us to approve the funding for all positions. And there was a time in this county for quite a few years, um, at the beginning of Home Rule, where we did not have an accurate headcount. And since positions, salaries, um, and employees are really what drive our budget, as it does with most businesses, um, we decided as a council that we needed to be able to have an accurate headcount and to be sure that we were providing accurate funding, adequate funding for each of the positions. Um, and so insofar as the manager has the authority to manage the county, that's fine, but we have to make sure that we are providing funding and that, um, funding that has been allocated for specific reasons is not being diverted, um, to salaries, to creation of positions that have other inherent costs within the creation of those positions. This is not, um, an attempt to tie the manager's hands. It's an attempt, uh, to, uh, it's, it's actually to require him to justify the need for the increased cost of a position or for the change in positions to make sure that the money is properly allocated for that position and for county council to be aware of it. There was an attempt last, uh, last year or the year before to create a position after council had specifically created a budget, uh, passed a budget that did not provide for the creation of that position, and management did it anyway. And then we removed the position again at budget time, but without, um, treating this as a specific amendment that requires council to make sure the funds are allocated, there is nothing to prevent that kind of games playing in, at, within any year. And what I heard at that time from management was, well, they sent a notice out about it and nobody on council objected. So, um, the whole purpose of this is to make sure that the creation of positions, the change in positions that's done between budget seasons is done so that it's done in, in the view of the public, in the view of the council, and everybody on council is aware of it, and that we are making sure that, um, it's, it's being done with proper fiscal responsibility.
Uh, I'm, Mr. Chair, if I could just respond.
May I be heard?
Uh, before, before, uh, I'll just respond to Councilwoman Howe. Uh, first of all, the, the Charter itself makes absolutely no distinction at all between a job or a, a person, uh, who's employed by the, uh, by, uh, the county and a box of paper, uh, when it comes to budget. So for, for the, those who are pushing this, uh, specific, uh, ordinance to, to somehow imply that, uh, jobs are different than, uh, any other resource that's budgeted every year, uh, there's no support for that. And then it clearly is, um, uh, an infringement on the executive authority of the county manager. And I could tell you this, right from the beginning, um, I remembered having discussions with Bob Lawton when, uh, council had first, uh, looked to, uh, to impose a, a, basically a salary board type of, uh, of setup with a, a position budget. And I clearly told him, and I believe solicitors since me, uh, have also told, uh, county managers, uh, it's not just about the individual who sits in that seat right now. Uh, it's about every county manager who will sit in that seat in perpetuity. And this county government was designed with separation of powers in mind. Uh, the way that county council, um, could hold the ma- manager accountable is, uh, every year during budget season, uh, could request that, uh, support be given as to why, um, certain expenses are necessary. But, uh, this is clearly a, uh, a leaking out into, uh, executive authority, um, and, uh, and is clearly a violation of the Charter.
Okay. Uh, someone else was trying to speak here, but.
Hi, could I, could I be heard, Mr. McInley, Dave Pedri?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Pedri.
Listen, um, I, I, I take issue with, with one, with one thing, well, a couple of things, but obviously the, the one thing I do take issue on is, is Ms. Howe saying that council removed a position in the budget. That's a false statement. What council did was, council removed the funding for that position, and that is your check and balance on the management. Uh, I've been telling council this from, from the days of my, when I was, when I was a solicitor regarding this, is that this position budget, let's be honest, and what you're trying to do here with these, with these positions is directly infuse county council into the day-to-day operations of running the county. It's the county manager's job in order to say, I need these positions, here's the budget, I follow the Administrative Code, I provide you with notice, and if council doesn't like those positions, you have to make a motion to take the money out of the budget. That is what, that is what your check and balance is. Doing it this way, all that, all it is doing is, it's making county council a salary board. When does it stop? When we do merit raises in, in the, in the, um, in the, in the annual budget. What if county council decides, hey, listen, I don't like that individual salary. I'm gonna take that out, I'm gonna put that in. County council is not aware of what happens on a day-to-day operations, so they are not in those positions to do so. The county council, the county charter, which every single member of this council swore to uphold, whether you like it or not, says that this is, this is the type of activity that you cannot engage in. And I'm sorry that you want to be more involved in the day-to-day operations, and that's, and I understand those things. But I provide all this information to county council, I'm providing all the information to county administration. County coun- county council is beginning more information than they ever have in the past, so I'm providing more information to county council than, um, than, than the previous manager, and I hope the next guy after me, or woman after me, uh, provides even more, the more information than I have. We're providing you this information, you have a check and balance in front of you, I'm asking county council to vote no, because you took an oath to uphold the Charter, and this would be a violation of the Charter.
And, uh, I'd like to add, if you, if you look at the Administrative Code, that, uh, Ms. Howe is, yes?
Ms. Howe, who was speaking?
It's okay, let her, let her continue, that's fine. It was me, it was Linda. I did not realize.
This is, uh, uh, Ramilda, uh, Mr. McInley. I just want to make one point.
Ms. Howe is after you.
That i- i- in the Administrative Code, the section that, uh, is being referenced, uh, at, to, of the, uh, legislatively, uh, authorized position, uh, and the position budget, you have to look at Section C. This, because Section C is clear that it allows, uh, the county manager, uh, to, uh, change positions, and I'll read it, so that everybody on council is aware of that language. "County council shall be notified in writing of any change in the number of positions, or in the classification of position, and/or any change in compensation for any defined position. Other than compensation changes provided through collective bargaining agreements, no fewer than five days prior to such changes being implemented." Even with the amendment that was made to the Administrative Code that's been referenced this evening, Section C clearly allows the county manager to change positions. And that, that, that is consistent with the policy, uh, issues that Attorney DeLuca has raised.
Okay, Ms. Howe?
Uh, yes, I was just going to say that Mr. DeLuca and, and Ms. Crocamo, uh, reference the Charter all the time, uh, and certainly we are all, uh, all here to uphold the Charter, but the Charter, uh, is fleshed out within the codes. And so, uh, while we obey the Charter, we also follow the codes, and the Administrative Code is one of those. Um, I will say that the amendment that was made, um, to the Administrative Code that included the position budget was made while Mr. Pedri was the county solicitor. And, uh, we were, uh, in agreement on that language. Mr. Lawton, although he was not pleased with it, as the manager, um, accepted it, because it was what the majority of council wanted to have there as our oversight. And we do have the responsibility for oversight, and the greatest responsibility we have is making sure that there is fiscal provision for those position changes. This is not an attempt to prevent him from making those changes, it's an, an attempt to make sure that there is an adjustment in the fiscal provision for the, the positions that he wants to create between budget seasons.
Other people who would like to speak, please?
Uh, Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Um, and, and I would, I would agree and echo a lot of things that Linda has said, as well as, I, I understand Mr. DeLuca's position. I certainly understand the concerns. However, when the council has adopted a budget with a certain amount of dollar, now thankfully, this is a, a decrease in the budget, and I think that, that goes to Mr. Pedri's, um, credit, that he's trying to save the county some money by getting, uh, positions that are less expensive for us to, uh, to have in those departments, and I, and I understand that and appreciate that. However, the concern that I have is that legislatively, we adopt a budget based on what Mr. Pedri presented to council, saying these are the positions that he would like. Midstream, if he wants to change a position, he needs, I think personally, he should get approval from council to change the position, so that council does, gives either a thumbs up or thumbs down, so in December, council can't take the funding away, because we obviously have authorized the position, and now the manager doesn't have to scramble to figure out where he's gonna get the money, if in fact council says, hey, you know what, we don't want you to have those administrative positions, so we're gonna take them away. And then it puts the manager in a bad spot to say, okay, well, I'm gonna keep them anyway, I'm gonna find money somewhere else. I think that's highly unfair to the executive branch. We give him the money based on what he says he needs. Therefore, if he needs something mid-year, and it takes the budget down, I don't see a problem with approving it. I don't think there's anybody on his council that would say, we're not going to approve it. However, on the other side, the same thing can happen. What if he wants to hire two people at a very higher salary and the council didn't appropriate enough money for that? He, should he also have to come to council and say where he's gonna get the money for those positions? So as council, we're legislatively bound to pass a budget, and he's executively bound to follow that budget. And so therefore, I feel that it's important that we follow policy and procedure. We're not trying to be a salary board here, we're not regulating any, anybody's salary. He's telling us, we approved the contract with the unions for the, uh, Sheriff's Department, as well as the, uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Elections. We approve those contracts. Those are union contracts that we approved with certain salaries in there and certain positions in there. And if he decides to take those positions away, and council's already approved those positions, I don't think that that, that's, I mean, we approved the contract for the union. So is there an MOU from the union that's allowing us to switch positions from the sheriff's office, from, uh, the security people to deputy sheriff? Is the union okay with that? Or has there been any discussion with the union at all about whether that's, uh, authorized? But most importantly, the position budget is something that the manager has given us, and you know what, if we pass it and he doesn't agree, he certainly can veto it. The Administrative Code is the law, whether Ramilda agrees or not, or anybody else agrees. That was what was passed. At the time when it was passed, the manager had the opportunity to veto that and send it back to council, and if in fact there was a challenge, he can always ask the courts for clarification, as the manager. He's certainly welcome to do that. But I think the council has an obligation to watch the purse strings of the county, and thankfully, this is a downward trend for salaries, but it could certainly be the other way around. And, and that would put the council in a bad position if we had a manager that isn't as forthcoming as Dave, to say, hey, you know what, I could do whatever I want, because I have the power, and just hire somebody at twice the salary. And council goes, well, wait a minute, you can't do that. Well, you know what, yeah, I can do that, and it's your problem. So I think there's a double-edged sword here that needs to be looked at, and we need to say no to the, say yes to the ordinance to approve these positions. They're a downward pen thing, they're a downward, uh, cost to the county, there shouldn't be a problem. I'm more concerned about the union aspect. How is the union responding to changing positions in, in their union, and have they been consulted with that?
Uh, if I could respond to that, I think it's important, uh, first of all, to realize, because there's been a lot of talk about the interplay between the, the Charter and the Administrative Code. Number one, uh, I know Ms. Howe had mentioned, uh, about, uh, Mr. Pedri being solicitor at the time, that this, uh, position budget, uh, provision in the Administrative Code was put in place. Uh, I was part of the discussion with that. Um, I had, uh, a number of discussions with, uh, Attorney Pedri at the time. Uh, he and I were both adamant, uh, that any attempt to impose a restriction on the county manager position, uh, about, uh, how he created or eliminated positions was a violation of the Charter. And, uh, the, our recommendation was that, uh, that provision not be included in the Administrative Code. And I could tell you this, um, regardless of whether or not, um, the former county manager agreed to allow, uh, some sort of, uh, infringement on the executive authority that was granted to that position by the Charter, uh, and a county council majority agreed to pass it, uh, does not make it, uh, does not, um, make it, uh, legal. Uh, it does not keep it from being a violation of the Charter. Uh, the premise would be that the county manager could allow, uh, an Administrative Code amendment that allowed county council to, let's say, the county council chairman to make day-to-day decisions, which clearly would be a violation of the Charter. It could be, uh, that amendment could be agreed to by the parties, put in the Administrative Code. It doesn't make it any less, uh, of a violation. And in this case, um, Attorney Pedri was against, uh, it being included in the Administrative Code. I was against it as well. The fact that, uh, Bob Lawton may have, uh, not vetoed it after county council approved it, uh, doesn't make it any less of a violation of the separation of powers concept, uh, in the Luzerne County Charter. And, uh, just as, uh, we all along believe that, uh, any attempt to impose a position budget would be a violation of the separation of powers, this specific ordinance is a violation of the Charter.
And, and I, I would just say, to, to that end, Mr. DeLuca, is, first, I, I need you to clarify where in the Charter it says that we don't have that power to do this legislatively. And second of all, if we are the legislative branch and we make the laws of the county, your opinion can't negate that. Just because you say it's illegal doesn't necessarily make it so. If we pass the law, then it is the law, correct?
No, not if it's in violation of the Charter.
Where is it in violation of the Charter, specifically?
The Charter separates Luzerne County government into legislative and executive, uh, powers. Uh, the county manager is empowered with executive authority to make day-to-day decisions. Uh, county, uh, council is, uh, is authorized, uh, to, uh, with legislative authority, uh, to, to, um, allocate monies. Uh, and Mr. Pedri has to spend, uh, within the monies that are allocated, or come to council and ask for more. How do you, how do you look at the Charter and make it, uh, distinguish in any way, a job versus a box of paper? So, uh, it, to, to make the argument that, uh, the county charter permits county council to be involved in day-to-day of creation of jobs, elimination of jobs, but not create addition or reduction in the amounts of, of boxes of. or reduction in the amounts of boxes of paper, you can't make that argument. You can't distinguish between those resources.
Well, the Charter, the Charter clearly says, go ahead, Harry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Walter, no, you have the debate.
Clearly, clearly, the Charter does give the power to council to regulate contracts over 25,000. That's a, that's a, that's a day-to-day operation. That's a legislative function.
Wait, to, to approve those contracts and then the county manager executes them?
Correct. So we're approving the funding for those contracts over 25,000.
You're, you're approving the funding and the budget. You're approving the contract itself only.
And that's, and that's exactly what we're doing here. We're approving the funding in the position budget. He presented, he presented that budget.
In the annual budget.
No, in the position budget.
I think we have two different opinions there, obviously. Mr. Haas has not had a chance to give his opinion. So Mr. Haas?
Yeah, we see this on all levels of government. Anywhere there's a budget involved, you're going to have a tug of war through it. And we do see this happening. We, we see management in the form of budget transfers going against, in some cases, the will of the council with personnel, with raises. It's happened over the years. And Bob Lawton, when he was here, he balanced the, the budget on having vacant positions. So the council legislated and approved the creation of, of positions and some went vacant for over, over a year. So don't, don't tell me this doesn't happen and don't tell me it's against the Charter because what's good for management is good for council. So my two cents.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, Mr. McGinley, if I could just say something, it's Linda. I would just, I would just say that Mr. DeLuca makes a very good closing argument, but that's what lawyers do. And I realize that it might not be convenient for the manager to have to justify the changes in positions. But the fact is, we do allocate and we go line by line through budget items and we will say, you know, and we don't talk about a specifically a box of paper, but we do allocate money for specific reasons. And when things are being used in different ways, generally, we see a budget transfer that comes through. We have to approve a budget transfer from time to time, as we did tonight. We have to, have to make budget amendments. And this is the same type of oversight that I believe the Charter calls us to do.
I think budget transfers are really within the division. And I don't think we approve those, but we do approve budget amendments. But I'd like to just make one, one comment. Number one, there is a provision in the contract for the sheriffs and the security personnel where security positions are limited. They do turn it over to deputy sheriffs. I did research that and was able to come up with that provision. Also, Ms. Howe, I think you and I, and I think it was Mr. Kellher, spent quite a period of time over the past several years working on some of the codes. And one of our discussions was position budget versus position list. And I think at that point in time, I think position list was the consensus among the people who were dealing with that. It was really not a budget, but it was a list, which was necessary. I can point out some good points there than the fact that we need to know how many positions there are, there are, and how many dollars are associated with each position because obviously that has an impact, big impact on budget. But I do believe that the position list would be more of a descriptor in position budget in this particular case.
And, and lastly, Mr. McGinley, I, I assume, I, I'm going to say that, you know, I, I certainly understand the logic that Mr. DeLuca's making with a box of paper. However, when we're talking about a position, that carries a whole lot more ramifications financially, not only today, but in years to come. A box of paper is something that's an annual expense. A person's salary is tied to retirement. It's retired, it's tied to taxes, it's tied to healthcare, it's tied to numerous things that are a big impact on the budget. And if the manager wants a certain position, he knows what he's going to need for the following year. I don't understand why the problem is for him to change the budget, the position and have us just approve it. It's not, I don't think we're going to tell the manager, no, he can't have the position. However, if it was the other way around and he wants to give a big, a, a big position to somebody, suppose he wants to hire a deputy county manager tomorrow, he could do that. According to, according to Mr. DeLuca's logic, he could do that. And he can hire a deputy manager, pay him $100,000 a year, and council has no say in that. Absolutely none.
Interesting you say that, Mr. Griffith, because that was one of the recommendations from the management at one point. And it was not supported by anyone on council and as a result, that position was never.
But theoretically, in January, he could do that. He could do that, according to Mr. DeLuca's theory. If he comes in in January.
He could do it, but we could do a budget amendment and take that funding out of the budget if we wish.
And would that be fair to the person he hired?
Is it fair that he would hire him without having the permission or the budgetary funds?
That gets right to my point. So you're going to hire two people for a position the council does not approve and then in January, we're going to say, we're going to pull the funding away and then the manager doesn't have the money, he's going to have to let those two people go. That's not fair to people to do that. So that's why I say it's process and procedure.
We had that before.
And, and it's wrong, and it's wrong both times.
Okay. We had that before. Anyone else has not spoken?
That's the one thing, the legislative and executive branches, you're on the same team, man. I mean, I, I don't, I don't get why there's always this idea that there's some kind of sinister motive going on. If Mr. Pedri is doing things, or any county manager, that council doesn't like, then they get rid of them. That's, that's, power was granted by the Charter. I mean, the whole concept.
I tried, I tried that veto, it didn't work.
The whole concept here is the county manager, or the, the county council employs a county manager, a professional, to run the day-to-day operations. And you're all on the same team. And that's really what the premise should be here.
Anyone else?
I just want to make a short point and just say, you know, it's, it's not always being about, I'm just on the same team. It's also a check and balance between the two branches of government and the word accountability. And, and, and really, and that's what it comes down to, is to put that check in place. I mean, yeah, we could be mean too and just totally take, take the funding out completely. And then you're not going to get those positions at all. And, and that's it, you know? I mean, but we're trying to work with the manager. We want him to be more open and more transparent. That was the whole premise behind Home Rule, was, you know, we, the people should be deciding. And it was supposed to be more for the taxpayers, but, you know, we kind of went off the rails over the years. And that's, that's where some of us have a difference in philosophies. And, and the conundrum is, is if we don't provide the funding, you can't create the position. And if you want to create the position, you need the funding. So, and then I would also suggest, you know, just on that ordinance, if you want to clear up the word nay and put an a in there too.
And, and quite briefly, we are the elected ones of the county. The manager is not an elected official, which is one of the reasons why we have the problems. He needs to be an elected official so that he's accountable for anything that he does. See, we are the ones that are accountable, the 11 of us. So if we say we don't have any control over what the manager does on his spending except at the end of the year, that could be catastrophic for us.
Well, we do have control on their spending. Roll call, please. We have a motion for Ms. Howe, second by Mr. Griffith, for the adopt the ordinance, which amends the 2020 position budget legislatively, legislatively authorizing elimination and creation of positions, Division 60, Department 4197, which is the Sheriff's Department. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rado? Ms. Edman?
We probably have to open up your mics. The statement, your mic is muted?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Okay. Motion fails. We're down to number five. A motion to adopt the ordinance, amend the 2020 position budget legislatively authorizing elimination and creation of positions, Division 30, Department of Elections, 4120. We have a motion.
Sub move, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Howe? On the question.
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
In this particular position situation, in the Bureau of Elections, there was no administrative assistant position in that department. Has the union been consulted to, to find out if they have a memo of understanding that agrees to putting those positions in and eliminating two of the inspector of voter registration in place of those two positions? Have they been consulted on that? And what, what duties are we losing? Because the job descriptions between the two, the administrative assistant and the voter inspector is a totally different job description.
Anyone that has an answer to that question?
I got it, Mr. McGinley.
Hey, Mr. Pedri, go ahead.
These, these, these two positions, the admin assistant positions, are going to be able to do more than the voter, the voter inspector did. So that these two positions could do everything the voter inspector could do plus more. So we're getting actually more work out of these two positions for less money with utilizing these two positions. And, you know, the, that's it.
Who are the administrative assistant to?
About the union, were they consulted? I think was part of his question.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's my understanding, the union, the union was consulted and obviously, they're going to be adding higher paying union jobs than they currently have in their, in their system here and it works out better for them.
Okay.
And it works out better for the county as well.
Mr. Pedri?
They're not administrative assistant to any particular person. They're not like a executive secretary or something like that damn particular person. The administrative assistant position is the administrate, is the, is in the job description, is the name of the, the position. But you'll see that they can do a, a large number of duties.
Okay. And you said you, you, you think, you think they were consulted? Could you state with certainty that the union was consulted or not?
I, I cannot. I'm sorry, I wasn't in power of those, those, those conversations. My understanding is that, that HR did contact them, but I don't, I don't know that for sure.
So we don't know?
Why they were given objection.
So, well, that's, that's my concern is, does, does the union know that this is going on? Did they give their blessing or not? And are we going to end up with a grievance?
Mr. McGinley?
Who's speaking?
Considering that. Dave Parsnick.
Mr. Parsnick, go ahead.
So there's an admin assistant position that's already approved in the current ASME contract. I don't need to go to the union for it. It's already an approved position in the contract, in the listing of positions with the contract. There's not a need to go to the union to have it approved. It's an existing position.
Okay. Mr. Pedri, will you go, comment there?
No, I think Dave covered it.
Okay. Anyone else with questions?
And so, so just to be clear, Mr. Pedri, the voter registration inspector, that those duties are going to be covered by the administrative assistant and the union has no problem with that?
I think that's what was said.
That's my understanding. Yeah.
Okay. Just so, just so we, we have that on the record, that the union is not opposed to that. So when we have an employee doing voter registration work, then we don't have a grievance.
Anyone else? Roll call, please. We have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Ms. Howe.
Ms. Edman?
Ms. Edman, your mute, muted again?
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Thank you. Motion fails, moving down to number six. Motion to adopt the ordinance, amend the ordinance from 2020 dash zero five for a reduction of penalty period fees for 2020 Luzerne County real estate taxes. Do we have a motion?
Sub move, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Second, Linda.
Well, Mr. Urban, second.
That's fine.
That's okay. Thank you. On the question.
On the question. This was, this was talked about pretty heavily in public comment, so I won't, I won't belabor the issue other than to encourage my council members for a yes vote on this ordinance. I think it's important that we help the people of this county. I think there's confusion with the last one that we passed based on the fact that there was no notification sent. So I, I would, I would ask that we get an affirmative vote for this ordinance to help the taxpayers of this county in a time when they actually need to help. Thank you.
There was someone who was trying to speak. I don't know who it was. Was there someone trying to speak there that came on? No one? Anyone else with question? Roll call, please. We have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban, amend the ordinance 2020 dash zero five for reduction of the penalty period fees for 2020 Luzerne County real estate taxes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Edman?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Okay, motion fails, moving down to number seven. Motion to approve the Luzerne slash Schoolco County WIB budget for the program year 2020 in accordance with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Do we have a motion?
Sub move, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? We have a motion and a second. On the question. Anyone on the question? Very none. We have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Perry to approve the Luzerne slash Schoolco WIB budget for the program year 2020 in accordance with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Yeah, Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, it is, it's Linda.
Yes.
Did we look at this budget? Did we discuss this budget in any detail?
Yes, it was on our work session last, two weeks ago, Ms. Howe.
But in detail? I know we.
You got the information that was forwarded to us?
Right.
The email and the information that was forwarded.
Right.
Yeah.
I, my recollection of the discussion was basically that we've never, we've never approved one of these budgets to date.
I agree with that.
Okay. So we, nobody actually had a discussion about this in public, correct?
Correct. It was on the work session. I think that the statement you just made was the statement that was made that evening. And pretty much as you indicated, we have never approved their budget. And the time at Home Rule has been the government for Luzerne County.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Did, was anybody from the WIB invited to council to our work session? And was the budget ever presented to anybody on council for review? Or is that something that they just don't provide for us?
Well, we could always ask somebody to come. There was no request from anyone, but we always could ask somebody to come. You had the information that was sent to us directly. And that information was a, a email. It was sent by Ms. Linnahan, who's the director there, that had a, some information and also had the budget that was projected. that had some information and also had the budget that was projected for July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. And it had some talking points included on that also.
Is there any chance that we should have her come to explain that budget? Or do you think it wouldn't be fruitful?
From my own personal experience, we have never approved a budget. People believe that we should have a representative come from the WIB group. I have no problem with that. And if that's something people wish, we certainly can make that invitation.
Do we have a representative on the WIB board? On council?
No, no, the WIB board is a separate board. The liaison is the vice chair of council.
We, Mr. McGinley, we do appoint to the board.
Yes, we do.
I mean, my issue with this is that we have not had a public discussion on this on the budget at all, even though I know, I understand there was an opportunity to do it, but we haven't. And in my experience, usually this motion has not ever come up because nobody wanted to make the motion. But anyway, it's here now. And I hate to see people vote on something that we haven't actually had a chance to discuss. So I would like to make a motion to table it.
Well, motion to table. There's no further discussion if we have a second for Ms. Howe.
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? Ms. Howe has made a motion to table the budget that was submitted by the WIB group for 2020. And at this point, there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call.
On the question, on the question?
There's no, there's no...
There's no debate.
No discussion once you table it.
Well, can we, we can't make a, all right, can we make a motion to postpone the vote? Or a motion to table it?
Well, the motion to table is on the floor, it's been seconded.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. So the table passes, right? If I have heard correctly this evening, we wish to have somebody from the WIB group speak to us in this regard.
I would like to see that happen at the next work session possibly, so we can get some, maybe get it off the table.
Do we want to do a voting, do it on the voting session? Because the budget was effective for July 1. Now the next time we meet will be in August, so... I'll be happy to invite somebody from the WIB group if that's the consensus of council.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
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 Good. And that's what we'll do unless I hear differently from someone, please, okay? Thank you. Public comment? In regards to any item?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raabo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Couple things, number one, I'm not surprised, but I'm pretty disappointed about the vote to not eliminate the penalty. I think the motivation was not because of big business or small business because we don't know which businesses are struggling per se. But I think this was motivated by who gets to collect on that penalty. And that's what it's about, so that's my take on that. Secondly, with regards to the second ordinance with regards to the election office, I could appreciate the solicitor's opinions. I really do. And I appreciate their willingness to exert, you know, like try to explain the separation of powers, which I really am keen to because I am very supportive of separation of powers. But with regards to the election office, I would like to know who makes the decision on appointing the employees to that office? Because while the charter says one thing, state law says another thing. And as the solicitors would know, that a law that applies to the state supersedes a municipal home rule charter. And it's actually stated in our state constitution under Article 9. I believe it's Section 2, Article 9, Section 2 of our state constitution that says in the last sentence, a municipal, the laws of the state shall supersede a municipal home rule charter at any time. The three key words, "at any time," if it's in conflict. So therefore, I would like to know for those election office positions, who appoints those positions to the election office? And my second question with regards to the election office, as far as the income that's stated in the monthly budget reports for $1.7 million, is that for the, what the manager said regarding the employees that were utilized for the primary? To be reimbursed through the COVID monies that the county just voted to receive? That would be, those are my two questions that I have. And I just hope that if the time comes that we don't get another, we don't get hit with some other edict by our tyrannical governor that our county doesn't suffer and the small business owners don't suffer any more than they have already. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pedri? Your mic is muted.
Okay, Mr. Manta?
Mr. Manta, you'll be next, but we want to see if we can get this information. Mr. Pedri? Mr. Pedri? His mic is muted, I don't know if he's hearing me or not. Ms. Crokemo, could you answer a question about who appoints the people in the elections department, Ms. Crokemo?
That's under the county administration, that would be the county manager.
And when we get to the financial report, we can ask Mr. Swetz about that money that Mr. Raabo spoke about in the elections. Okay, now, Mr. Manta, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Back to my question that I had in the beginning was, all right, so if you put a line item for a COVID reason on the budget, how come they're not putting a line item for the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, the budget money for them? And is there a backdoor deal going on with Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority to use county employees to research tax records, addresses of people? And, you know, it's water over the dam, Mr. Pedri already misused funds for one item that we already saw. So, I don't know, I have the feeling of the rest of the council are a little shaky on grounds of, yeah, everybody could applaud him, he's doing a great job, but like Walter said, he could pull out someone and say, "Look, we're going to hire this person, it's going to be my assistant to do day-to-day county work" and have him paid a lot more than the two positions that he's trying to jockey around out of the sheriff department and the Bureau of Election Department. You know, it's like taking the money out of one pocket to put in the other pocket, but yet it's still under-the-table dealings. And Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority has got to be stopped. I keep bringing this up, I'll bring it up until somebody tells me that I'm wrong. But the biggest thing that's going to hurt our small businesses and help our small businesses is eliminate the rain tax. You can give the small business as much money as you want, but if they can't afford to pay that sewer bill on top of the rain tax, it's not going to help. That's like flushing money down the toilet, come on, you people have to see this. You can give someone a fish and they're going to eat it. Teach them how to fish and they won't start. So this is what I'm trying to tell people. You have to stop Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority from robbing the people of the money that Pedri is trying to give them. I mean...
Thank you, Ms. Manta.
I don't understand.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Mr. Swetz, when you do your financials, would you respond to the request there? Mr. Swetz, did you hear me?
I missed that part, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, did you hear what Mr. Manta, his statement?
I heard the part about the rainwater, that's all I heard.
And he asked about a line item in the budget.
There's no line item in the budget for that.
When you get to your report, you can talk to that, thank you.
Will do.
Other members of the public?
Brian Shiner?
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
I need clarification first before I can comment. Does the chief solicitor agree with the opinion stated by Mr. DeLuca in reference to the ordinances amending the position budget?
Ms. Crokemo, did you hear that question?
Yes, I did. And yes, I do, Attorney DeLuca and I and Attorney Slapstansky had discussions about this over the last two weeks. We've also discussed it in prior years since I've been chief county solicitor since 2016 because it keeps coming up over and over again. And, 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 and I'm not finished yet, Mr. Shiner. And, and, and by the way, Attorney DeLuca was a part of the Office of Law. Matter of fact, I believe he might have been the chief county solicitor at the time.
From the beginning.
From the beginning. So he is a source of, is a historical source of what has happened and transpired when it comes to the interpretation of the county charter and all the accompanying codes. I stand by his position.
Thank you. I don't know if you guys would have been fine, but thank you. Based on the opinion of the Office of Law, seven members of council have decided to violate the laws of Luzerne County. I find that very interesting. It's not the first time the Office of Law has advised an agency to ignore the laws of the county. But as even Hebrew National said, "We are held to a higher authority, so is our Office of Law, and so are you, our council." This is going to be continued, that you have voted twice, seven of you, to violate the laws of this county. I'm also very disappointed, but not surprised, that you voted against eliminating the penalty for the real estate taxes through the end of the year. It shows the greed that you have and the lack of consideration for the average people in this county. Yes, there are some people that intentionally do not pay. But I think the majority of the people that are behind right now and slow to pay are doing so because of their financial strain. I see Mr. Rakovich is online and it brings a question to me. There is no visitation at the county prison, and there hasn't been for several months. What is going on with the free phone calls? It was my understanding that the inmates were to be given two free phone calls per week.
There were two free phone calls offered by the telecommunication company. That had expired. After that, we had decided to do one free phone call for the inmates per week until the end of June. At this point, we are not offering a free phone call. If this continues, we will reevaluate it and determine if we can do that again.
So our prisoners are not allowed access to family and friends unless somebody wants to pony up the money? You can't just visit and they don't get a free phone call at this point?
Unless they have funds on their account at this point in time, that is correct.
Right. I think something needs to be done about that, I don't think it's fair. I realize they're in prison, I realize why they're in prison, but I think we still have to be humane, and especially in a crisis like this, to allow these people to reach out to families so they know that their family is safe and vice versa. Thank you.
No argument, that's why we extended that for one month.
Other members of the public?
Another month has gone by and there's no phone calls, but thank you.
Other members of the public, please? Other members of the public? Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howe?
Second, Karen.
Ms. Radel? All in favor, indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposition, any abstentions on her motion carries? It's now 8:19. We'll take a 10-minute break and we'll commence the work session at 8:30. Allow people to have a moment to catch themselves and maybe have a bathroom break at this point, so... We'll begin at 8:30 with the work session, please, thank you. Okay, it's eight thirty. We'll call the meeting order. We did the pledge in a moment of silence already. Uh, ask Ms. Lawrence to do a roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas? Ms. How?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radell?
Here.
Ms. Sedman is absent. Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. Haas? Mr. McGinley?
Present. Uh, additions or deletions to the work session agenda? Uh, this morning, we sent out to everyone on council and posted online information from the Flood Protection Authority. So I'd like to add that to our agenda this evening so that we can have it on the work session. So that would be, uh, number six. Also, we had a request from a council member to have some election board members, uh, if they were available, if they would, uh, attend the session, uh, answer questions and have a discussion. And, um, many of those people were able to accommodate us, and we thanked them for that. I see that there's one, two, three, maybe four of the five people. I think, uh, one person was on vacation. We thanked them for hanging with us since earlier this evening. So we will, uh, talk to the election people before we get into other sessions so they can, um, give us some information and then they'll be able to have the rest of the evening. Any other additions?
Mr. Chairman Harry Haas on here.
Okay. You're on the roll call, Mr. Haas. Thank you. Any other, uh, adoption, any other additions or deletions? If not, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some moves welter.
Mr. Griffith? Do we have a second?
Backing Urban.
Mr. Urban, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Abstentions on heard? Like I said, we have several members of the election group with us, uh. Our newest member, I'm, I'm not sure, Ms. Tate, is that correct pronunciation? Uh, I don't know if your mic is, is your mic muted, Ms. Tate? Uh, Mr. Olet?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Tate, I think your mic is muted, if you're able to unmute it, and, um, Mr. Gold, I think you're there. Keith Gold.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
This is Jeanette Tate.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And it is Kate.
Okay. Audrey?
I'm here.
Are you with us? Yes? Okay. Ms. Tate, I don't know if you've, uh, done your oath of office yet, uh, so until you have that completed, uh, you can't act as a, a member of the election board, but hopefully you'll get that done in a short time and be able to assume your responsibilities. But there were some questions, uh. And this is a discussion, I mean, one of the things I think it was mentioned was the role and responsibilities. There is a document that's prepared. Uh, I don't know, Mr. Olet, do you want to speak to that, since you have been with the board longer?
Mr. McGinley, can I interrupt you really briefly? Uh, remember Mr. Nat, remember Mr. Nat?
I'm sorry.
Before we, before we get too far into our work session.
Yeah, you're, you're right. Mr. Nat, are you on now? Mr. Nat, are you on now?
Mr. McKinley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I would like you to, to be very brief, if you could, because we still have a, a work session to get through, so.
Well, I don't know how much.
You're muted, so I would like to give you some, uh, opportunity now.
Yeah, the opportunity was, um, I think in deliberate nature, um, that, uh, I was being silenced, uh, and the huge opportunities for me to speak public comments during the, uh, when, uh, number six ordinance came up for, uh, uh, eliminating the ten percent, uh, penalty, uh, and then the second time, um, after the fact. Um, I, I just wanted to say, in this short, brief time, that the million dollar shortfall, um, I had asked back in the later part of March in regards to snow removal, and the, uh, surplus had to be in that allocated, uh, segment of pool of money. Uh, and because we didn't have the heavy snowfall for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, uh, season, winter season, it seemed to me that there would be, there would have been a sufficient amount of resources, uh, funds to make up the million dollar shortfall, if that was sleeping up to you, Mr. McKinley. Have a good day.
Thank you. Uh, we'll get to that question. I'm sorry, though, um, the election board people, Ms. Olet, do you want to speak to that? And Ms. Tate, you know, I, whatever you, uh, feel comfortable of doing, I know that you're just new on the job, so to speak, so. Mr. Olet?
Okay, um, first, uh, your question was on the, uh, our, uh, document, role and responsibilities.
Right.
We have, uh, we have talked about this, um, on a number of occasions at meetings of the, the Board of Elections. Um, there is a lot of use of the, uh, county, uh, the, uh, county charter and the sections, uh, relating to the elections board in there, as well as the administrative code, as well as, as, uh, governing state law. Um, our intention, because this can, this question of what the role and responsibilities of the Board of Elections is, comes up, um, often, and, um, our intention with our statement is to provide an explanation of what the role and the responsibilities of the Luzerne County Board of Elections is. Um, that document is currently under review with the Office of, uh, it has not, it has not been fully discussed at this point, but it is a public document at this point, because it was introduced in our last meeting.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to share with us, or any other member who would like to comment in that regard?
Well, I would like to welcome, uh, Ms. Tate to the chairmanship position.
Yep.
Uh, as soon as she's sworn in. Um, I think our deliberations on that and our interviews on that were very well done, uh, and, uh, I'd like to welcome her to the board. Thank you.
Well, we're glad she stepped up to volunteer to serve in that position. Uh, other questions for the election people?
I have, I have, go ahead, Steve, I'll, I'll yield to you.
Okay. So, uh, I'm glad the Board of Elections is here today, and I hear some background noise, so if I, if you can, whoever's on there, can you please mute that?
Someone, someone is on that, uh,
Sounds like a TV or something in the background.
Sounds like somebody corrected it, though.
All right, thank you. Um, so a, as, you know, um, I was reviewing pretty much this, this past primary with the changes in the law, Act seventy-seven, and, uh, my own experiences and, and what was told to us as council at one point in time, uh, regarding machines and, and things like that, it being in use as far as the new machines, you know, I, I mean, I, I kind of bring it up about, I have a fifteen point sort of document, I mean, but really quickly, that I want you to all to think about and to consider. Um, with the primary, you're in a nu- unique situation because, um, you're voting for the, the individuals in the respective parties of Democratic Party and also the Republican Party. And there have been many calls to me, you know, like on election day and since then, regarding how we executed the election. And, and, yes, we were very busy because of, of the inundation of so many ballots and, you know, maybe in the tune of fifty thousand plus. But, you know, even if we get one wrong, we got it wrong. You know, I mean, we're disenfranchising people or inconveniencing people and potentially setting ourselves up for liability. And, um, so I just want to go through this list pretty quickly, and I want you to write some of these points down, and I would love to see the board sort of come to a conclusion and, and corrective actions that need to take place regarding these issues.
Mr. Urban, I may ask, uh, if you send that, uh, to me or anyone, I'll get that to the election board, whatever your,
Well, I want to make this public, okay?
That's fine, you can make it public.
And I will send this along as well.
Uh, if you would send that, then, then I'll make sure they have a copy that they, you know, can see it.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Urban, I would appreciate, uh, receiving written copy of that. I'm also very interested in this, uh, in this, uh, as well.
I will send that along. And I, I would also suggest that the county creates an email address for every member of the Board of Elections and then add them to the actual, um, election board's distribution list, once, uh, your chair gets sworn in as well. So that way, we're all on the same page, we have a common email address that we can send you information. So number one, the voter receives the wrong party paper ballot in the mail, you know, a registered Democrat or a registered Republican receiving the opposite party, uh, ballot. I mean, I'll bring it up, I mean, we had a, my own personal experience in my family, my own father got the wrong part, party ballot. He's a registered Democrat, got a registered Republican ballot. He filled out for an absentee, and he had to go and vote provisional. Unfortunately, he, you know, he was in town that day, so, um, you know, but you, you inconvenienced him by doing that. Uh, voter receives the wrong ward in the paper ballot, you know, um, on the paper ballot in the mail. So, you know, what kind of like, uh, solution do you have for that? Voter receives multiple ballots in the mail, you know, and, and here's a question, are there separate barcodes on that particular, uh, in, in that particular scenario? Or is that single barcode attached to only the voter? You know, there's, there's a question I have on that. So if there are two different barcodes, which ballot does the voter notice send back to the county to be counted if one of them is canceled out? So I had one voter that actually received two physical ballots, uh, and she wanted me to bring this up tonight, uh, on her behalf. She, she put an application in for a mail-in ballot on four-four, didn't get any type of ballot, um, all through April, May. She calls in the middle of May around the eighteenth and, uh, you know, spoke to an official, said that they were you know, spoke to an official, said that they were going to take care of it. Still nothing after a week, week goes by, she calls around, I think around the 26th. Then there's two applications that get put in. One gets canceled out and one actually is, uh, a pending one. But if you go in, uh, the state site and you look at the sure system, or I'm sure that's where it's pulling that information, it shows our county actually mailed the ballot out on 5/26 and also on 5/27. Subsequently, she received two ballots on 5/30. Doesn't provide her enough time to vote and she gets disenfranchised. And she's contacted the state, she's, you know, contacted numerous people with no, no answers and she's obviously very angry that she didn't get the vote because by the time she would have put in the mailbox, it would never got back to the county on 6/2. And, you know, and she actually processed her ballot application extremely early and she was disenfranchised. So, uh, you know, I, I mean, I have to stress that one. And, um, because it happened to one person, leads me to believe that it happened to others. So, you know, personally, I would like a data dump of the entire sure system of duplicate applications and potential, um, mail-in, uh, like mail-on dates if there's multiple dates where somebody may have gotten two ballots, because I actually heard one person may have gotten six. Um, and that's a problem. Because you, you know, if you, if the person actually sends two back or three back, you can get them for fraud. Or which one do you count of the one or two or three that they may send back? So, because you can ideally, I mean, you can realistically vote different ways on different ballots. So, uh, that's number three. And number four, uh, wrong paper ballots given out at the polls. I heard complaints that Democrats were getting Republicans, Republicans were getting Democrats, which causes like over and under voting, can also cause the wrong candidate to proceed to the general election. Um, that came in from a congressional campaign, I've received a call there because ballots were, were being handed out to the wrong people and the wrong information was given out to, you know, supposedly by the judge of election saying, oh, just write the person's name in. And so, Peter, I know you had brought to our attention at one point, I think you publicly stated you were surprised how many people voted opposite party by writing people's names in. Well, maybe that's the reason why. Um, but, you know, more investigation would be needed on that point. Um, wrong ward, uh, was given out on paper ballots, you know, at the polls. I know in my own ward, in Ward 9 in Wilkes-Barre, they were handing out Ward 7 for a period of time early in the morning, which then was corrected. After things got into the tabulators, it's too late. That causes over and under voting. So I would love an over and under report run, you know, throughout the county to see, you know, how many people signed into a ward and then actually voted in each of those wards? And if there was any over and, uh, over and under voting going on in like two wards that might have been at the same location. Um, because in that case, it can cause like ties, uh, for write-ins and then losses for candidates who may, should, you know, who may have won the seat by just a single vote, especially when it comes down to like, like local party races. Um, in one ward, there was a candidate printed on the wrong ward's ballot in the, basically in the wrong voting precinct. And so you had, uh, one candidate getting voted in by people in the adjacent ward and then I don't know how you certify that type of election. It's, that whole election's tainted in a sense, you know, because that person doesn't live in that ward, but she's getting elected by the individuals in her adjacent, the adjacent ward next to her. Um, that happened over in West Pittston. Um, was an error that they didn't catch at the Bureau of Elections. Um, one thing I would have liked to see was the over and under vote council on the website. So we could have broke it down or some of us could have looked at it. Um, what did you do with the secret envelopes? You know, if, in the case where a ballot was on the outside of the envelope, did you count it or did you cast it aside? I know that is a legal issue, so I'm not going to really expound on that one. Um, write-ins in certain cases weren't counted correctly in the official count. I know of a couple in, uh, Pittston Township, they voted for themselves. Um, husband and wife, they voted for each other on both of their ballots and the official count showed one vote for each. And they tried to challenge, or actually they just wanted to see the ballots. They were denied the right to, right to look at the ballots, uh, for a right-to-know request. All they wanted to do was check it and, and that was denied by Solicitor Butera. I think all voting records should be public and if they aren't in the future, maybe we'll have to create an ordinance at the county, uh, that those types of records are open to the public. Because in the past, you were able to look at ticker tapes or the receipt tapes and, uh, look at that same type of information. Um, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's website, um, where you would file a complaint did not work. It still does not work. I tried to file a complaint on the site. Uh, the person that received two ballots tried to file a complaint on the site. We post the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's web link on our site to, uh, act as a conduit to file those complaints and those complaints are supposed to come back to the county. And if the site doesn't work, there's no complaints. You know, is that by design? Is it just a database problem when we go and put our first and last name, our address in there, our birthday, our zip code, which should match and, and correlate to our voting record and, uh, should allow us to proceed to the next page to, to put the complaint in? But it doesn't do that. It won't even look up our information to, to allow us to proceed to complain. So of course, there's no complaint. So because the state site didn't work, what's the process for, uh, anybody or an elector in, in, in Luzerne County to complain on paper to our county Board of Elections? I don't think you guys have a process. Uh, if you did, I asked for a, a copy of the complaint form from Solicitor Butera. I still have yet to get an answer. And so what's the remediation for our county to, to file a complaint when a voter has a problem? Um, bigger issue, there was lack, lack of training of poll workers. Uh, we were ill-prepared. I asked practically every judge of election up in my location on Cole Street, did you get any proper training? They said no. And if we were, um, if you were offered it, would you have taken it? And they said yes. And they said if they don't get the training, they may not work in the fall. So then you're going to be short on workers, which, you know, the fall is going to be worse than, than the spring. Um, so basically, um, what I see is a lack of transparency, a lack of, uh, you know, the paper ballots and access to, to see them. And then the other thing I have to, to, to question is the machine programming. Manager Peddery assured us that there would be a machine at every location, which, you know, there was at, at my poll or my location. That machine, you know, was supposed to be for disabled individuals or assuming somebody was disabled. The machine was never opened until 2:00 in the afternoon. When I got there, I, and fortunately, there was actually a member of the, uh, election bureau up there fixing a poll book with ESNS. And between myself and that election worker, we forced the judges of elections to open that machine. It was still sealed, okay? Um, was never opened. So they didn't even know the PPE was underneath the machine and they were looking for that kind of stuff. Uh, the privacy dividers, what I heard, were, were not brought out to the polls until about 1:30, um, in the afternoon. Um, but getting back to the machine, was the machine actually programmed for every ward that was at that location? Or was it just a generic ballot marking device, missing certain, you know, um, public offices? You know, within each individual ballot? So if there were like 10 wards in, of Wilkes-Barre at that location, did that machine accommodate all 10 wards? Or was it just one specific general ballot? And that's something that I still would like to see. I would like to pull that machine, turn it on and look at the programming to see if, if those ballots would have matched what was on paper. Um, so that, uh, the other thing too is I think, you know, quite honestly, you need to really check your roles and responsibilities. County management, I think, is usurping the power of the Board of Elections. Um, the Home Rule Law states that elections are, are part of the uniformity, uh, laws or laws that, that require uniformity across the Commonwealth. Um, you know, county council provides the money that you need to administer the elections and management is supposed to pretty, pretty much just go along with the budgets and whatever you tell them. You know, Home Rule doesn't really give them the option to, to do a lot of things within the confines of law. At least that's my interpretation of it. They have a difference of opinion, uh, you know, I think that, that's something that you really need to look at. Um, and then the sure system, I got confirmation that it is actually administered by each county and Department of State only has kind of read-only access. So anything that's, that's updated in the records is done at the county level. Uh, they don't have that functionality at the state level to, to update and manipulate records. Um, so in closing, I mean, like overall, I would love to see the over and under votes of each ward and I would like to see a report of all the duplicate ballot applications from the primary showing all statuses or all the, all, all the column statuses. And then, uh, look at the programming of, of the machines that were put out or at least specifically the one that was here in Wilkes-Barre, um, to, to confirm or then, uh, or, or sort of like, uh, confirm my suspicions or, or basically eradicate them on how that machine was programmed. So, um, you know, I think with, with all of that said, I think we, we can do a better job and, and, and get every vote counted accurately with integrity. And, uh, if we don't do that, we're going to open up ourselves for more legal issues and, and that was something I had stated previously, that I don't want our county to be sued. And of course, you know, right now, we have three pending lawsuits. Um, and I yield back.
Okay, Mr. Griffith?
Yes. Um, um, I have, I have, for some reason, I'm getting a lot of...
Somebody, somebody, some feedback.
You know, it's not coming out of my head, it might be, there, that's better, it's gone. Um, I have, I have some questions for the vice chair, obviously the board can answer as well. But my big concern was the statement of the role and responsibilities of the County Board of Elections, which in my email to Mr. McGinley, it was forwarded off to the board, was that should be a function of county council. We've already drafted an administrative code and the charter is clear as to what the duties of the Board of Elections are. So I don't know when the statement of role and responsibilities of the Board of Elections would come. But if maybe Mr. Olet could elaborate on when did they start on that document? And how did they deliberate to draft it would be helpful at this point.
Sure. Uh, let me get back quickly to, uh, Mr. Urban's comments and, and those are all very well taken. We do take it very seriously to, uh, to provide, uh, free, fair, open and trustworthy elections for the, uh, for the county. I can tell you that, um, the ballot marking devices, uh, if they're placed in a ward, uh, the ballot that comes up on those machines is contingent on the ballot key that's put into it um, at the time the voter, uh, goes to that ballot marking device. And that key is programmed through the, uh, through the, uh, electronic poll books. So if, uh, a voter is on the electronic poll roll, uh, the key is a one-time, one-time-use key that is used just to, uh, uh, bring that ballot, that appropriate ballot up for that voter. So if there's multiple wards represented in a voting place, um, the machine is, is programmed to, uh, provide the appropriate ballot for each voter. Yeah. Um, as far as the other questions, I look forward to having them in, uh, in writing from you. Um, and we will absolutely take these up with the board or, and the bureau. Um, our next meeting is September 2nd. I hope that, uh, you can attend that meeting and we can, uh, resolve some of those issues beforehand and, and present that to the public. And I do really appreciate your, your input very much.
Yeah. And, and one other thing, you just mentioned that key. I noticed that, okay, when they opened up that machine, the one judge opened the machine in, in that location and the other judge had a key to open the machine. Okay? But there was only one single key. So how would that machine differentiate all the various ballots at that particular location?
Well, there's a, there's a card that's issued.
To each judge?
No, 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 to each voter. There's a programmed card. When they, when the voter signs in.
Right.
Um, a card is, is, uh, programmed by the, uh, electronic poll book. And that card has the information for the ballot marking device to bring up the proper ballot for that voter. And it's a one-use ti- a one-use key. Uh, it, it looks like a, a credit card.
Okay, because all we saw was just a receipt tape that we received once you signed into the poll book.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Griffith, uh, had some questions, Mr. Olet.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Peter, the question that I had and is the, the issue of the, the roles and responsibilities of the board, that was scheduled to be voted on at your Wednesday meeting last week, correct?
Uh, it would have been, it, it, it may have been voted on, uh, but we had not received a review of it from the Office of Law, so it was tabled.
Well, I thought it was tabled because you had some public input on it that said it wasn't appropriate.
Um, no, we tabled it because it was an unfinished document.
Okay, so you've been, so, so you've been working with the Office of Law regarding this document on roles and responsibilities?
Yes, and amongst ourselves.
And, and, and you, you were doing that at a, not at a, a public meeting apparently, right?
No, we've been doing that through email communication.
Okay. See, and that, that was what my email was, was regarding, is the ability for the public, uh, deliberations of, as council does, we deliberate, we don't deliberate in private, we deliberate in public. So we have committees to draft things and then we discuss them at work sessions and then we bring them to the floor. But the, the question that I have is the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Elections is not a document, in my estimation, that is within the purview of the Board of Elections because we've already drafted that document by the, by the council, county council in the administrative code. So if you put something in your roles and responsibility that are contrary to the administrative code, which one would you be following? Would you be following your roles and responsibilities?
No, because the role and responsibilities document that we are, are, are in the midst of, uh, of, uh, working on is, uh, uh, meant to be a plain English explanation so that any citizen can understand, uh, in, in, basically in bullet points, what it is that the board does. Um, and that's completely in line with, um, the, uh, the law in the charter, in the administrative code in any state, uh, state law. That's why we have it being reviewed by the, the Office of Law to make sure that it is in compliance. Um, we're not trying to expand our roles or diminish our roles, only to explain our roles in a way that the public can, can understand them without having to, uh, do all of the, the, the homework that goes back to the charter. Of course, we, we, uh, you know, welcome them to do that. Uh, it's a very simple document. Um, and it's, uh, it's, uh, it's only binding in the way that, uh, the existing law binds us now.
See, see, the, the concern that I have is in our administrative code, it says the Board of Elections in Section 701. It, it has four lines that explain what the function of the board is. That's all, four lines, nothing else. So there's, so all this other stuff that you have under here for primary responsibilities? And if you look at the, uh, charter as well, there's like seven lines that explain what the Board of Elections job is in the charter. So the ability for the Board of Elections to outline these items is, is not what's in the administrative code. The administrative code does not, does not say that you're to review or approve election plans. That, that verbiage isn't in our administrative code and it's certainly not in the charter. So that, that was my concern is to drafting this document with, without, I mean, you, you, you clearly could come to the administrative code review committee or the code review committee and, and ask for verbiages that you feel are necessary to help. But I just don't think that that document, number one, I mean, there's some serious grammatical errors in it. Um, you know, the fact that you spelled "roll" wrong is one of them. But more, more important, more importantly is the sections that you're citing in your document are not even correct. I mean, you're saying Luzerne County Charter, Home Rule, Article 7, Section 804, that's not correct. It's, it's Article 8, Section 804. The administrative code, Section 210(c) doesn't deal with anything that's in that document below. But, so I, you know, the whole document in itself is, is something that, you know, clearly is not an accurate document. But that, that's my concern as a, as a council member who's the legislative branch of government, is I don't feel it's appropriate for any board to make any kind of rules that you guys are governed by in state statute. I mean, the state statute tells you exactly what your, your abilities and your roles are in, in, as the Board of Elections. And, and I don't understand, and I know we've had this discussion at many meetings, that where, where the Board of Elections feels that they need to get clarification as to what their duties are when this Title 625 clearly tells you what that is. And I, 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 I mean, I understand your frustration, Peter. I know I've been, I've been at many meetings and, and I've brought this up to many members of the board as well. And, and I just don't understand why the, why the, to steal Stephen's word, the conundrum about why the hand wringing... about why the hand wringing about what the job of the board of elections is. It's, it's pretty clear. And I mean, I, I'm not a, I'm not a legal scholar, but clearly in the Title 25, it, it outlines what your duties are in Section 3. So I don't understand why we have to have this document. Uh, the other question that I have is, is, is in the, uh, the, the, uh, ability for the election board to not have an email address after a month and a half almost is, is just not acceptable. I mean, we have people, as, as Stephen pointed out, that are on the, that have email addresses in the county that don't even work here anymore. And they're active email addresses. So why can't the board of elections have an active email address? So we don't have to use your Gmail accounts is, is beyond my comprehension. I know you've asked and it hasn't been done, but I think that's a simple thing for IT to handle, but for some reason you can't get it done. And that's important for the people to communicate with the board of elections. Um, you know, the board, the, the.
Hey, but I think that's clearly something that is out of the hands of the board of elections.
Well, no, it's not. The chairman can ask for that.
Well, I'm gonna, I think Mr. Pedries.
Yeah, Mr. McKinley, if I could just say that in 2012, when we just, we drafted the policies and the procedures for the boards, for how boards were appointed and for all of that, part of that procedure, part of that policy stated that every board would have a dedicated email and that, that people pointed to the boards would have them. So that should be in place.
Well, and I don't.
Yes, it should be, Mr. Pedries.
Who doesn't have an email, who doesn't have an email address? I've, I've asked for, I've asked for every count, every election board member to have an email address.
They should. They should.
They're not active. They don't work.
I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking, who, who doesn't have an email address? Cause I've asked IT for this numerous times. Who doesn't have an email address?
Keith, I don't, I don't have one.
Okay.
I, I, we, let me, let me clarify that. We have addresses.
Right.
Uh, but Keith and I have not been able to activate those. Um, so we.
You will hear from, you will hear from, you will hear from IT tomorrow. IT will call every member of the election board, make sure you have an email address. My understanding was this was completed. I'm sorry about this. My understanding is it's done.
My understanding is, yeah, yeah. We, we've been actually working on this for the, uh, for the entire year. Uh, but.
So Mr. Pedry has that responsibility and it's in his hands.
I, and I, I appreciate that, Dave, because it's been ongoing for a month and a half and it hasn't been done. It may be just a simple thing that they need to turn on and it might be something as simple as that. And I appreciate you getting that done for them. Uh, I think that's, I think that's very important for anybody to communicate. I've sent many emails to the board of elections using their county email address, but they haven't had access. The other, the, the other issue that I have is the, a designate for the, uh, clerk to the board. I think that should have been adopted by the board. Uh, our administrative code clearly states that the clerk to the, to the election board is the administrative services director or his designate. Now, I don't, if his designate was Mary Beth, then the election board should have either taken a vote on that to make sure that they're accept, they, they can't deny it, but it would be, I, most of this stuff is policy and procedure that, that gets us into trouble. And, and that's my concern is, you know, I, I certainly appreciate the work that the election board does. Please don't, don't misunderstand that I'm trying to, you know, nitpick the board. I think you guys are doing a fabulous job under very bad conditions. And, but I think that there's policy and procedure that need to be followed. So we don't end up in trouble along the way, either through lawsuits or, uh, elections are pretty critical, especially when we're dealing with the voter's right to cast a ballot. So I, I just wish that we could, you know, get all on the same page as to what the duties of the board of elections is. As we see from the lawsuit, the board of elections is the one being sued. It's not the manager. It's not the office of law. It's the board of elections. And so if the board of elections is the person who they'll file a lawsuit against, I think the board of elections has an obligation and a duty to follow the state statute to make sure you're doing what the state law says. Because as we see, Governor Wolf's throwing his hands in here and saying, hey, it's on the counties. We're sorry. We're not getting involved. And, and I, I think that's a bad place for the county board of elections to be in, to sit there and just sit on your hands and have the man, administration do all the work behind the scenes. And then you guys get the option to be told, well, this is how we're going to do the elections. And you guys just have to either say, yeah, well, I guess we, we don't have much choice. We weren't consulted along the way. So I think that's, that's the concern that I have. And I think that's the, that's the issue that we had in the primary with the voter training and, and all those other, other, uh, poll workers and all the issues that we had. So I just, I appreciate what you do, Peter. I appreciate what every member of that board does. I welcome the new chair. I hope she gets, you know, gets right on it and gets things squared away. But you, you certainly have some issues. I think that statement of roles and responsibilities is a bad document. It shouldn't even be considered because it's a council document. And I also think that the letter to the governor, uh, the letter that you drafted should have been proofread. You spelled, you spelled the secretary's name wrong. I mean, there's a lot of grammatical errors in, in things that you folks are putting out there that make the county look pretty sad. You know, when you can't spell the secretary of the board of elections name properly in the state and then you're going to send it off to that person. That, that doesn't bode well for, for, uh, you know, the, the, the level of uh, professionalism of the board of elections of Loseran County. So I just caution you to, to make sure that we, you know, do our due diligence on these type of things. And hopefully the general election will go off much easier than the, the primary was. And, uh, I know you guys had your challenges. So I appreciate you coming to the meeting and helping us understand your duties. And, uh, hopefully you'll, you'll get that squared away. That's all I have, Mr. McKinley. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Harry Haas.
Go ahead.
Hey, welcome board members. Councilman Harry Haas here. Hope you're having fun. Uh, these are always a pleasure and.
Have fun.
In all seriousness though, um, you know, some of you are really new and some of you are out for a little bit, but uh, you know, you, you have an unpaid task. You've got incredible responsibility here. And I know, um, my faith in a, in a lot of higher elected officials and positions is an all-time low. And I, that's reflecting a lot of the people that I serve out there in the county. So, um, we're looking to you to really help, help, have, give us an election that is, is beyond reproach. And, um, really well thought through and well planned in advance because, um, this last one, not throwing stones, but it, it was, it was just not good. And there are a lot of extremely skeptical people out there. Some are very angry and they're expecting really bad things. Um, I'm, I'm gonna get a little more, uh, less gloomy here. And I just wanna, um, encourage you, you all too to, if, if you could really take a look and maybe reflect on this past election and really see where the, where the, the mistakes were and where the flaws were and address them. And I, I don't think it's anything to be afraid of. And if, if you need help here for the council, you know, um, the chair of the legislative committee, if we can use that vehicle to help people maybe explain some of their misgivings, just like Steve Urban, and I appreciate him, cause I heard a lot of the same things that he brought up. And, um, a lot, a lot of people feel disenfranchised and they, they're skeptical what's coming down the pike here. Um, so I, just a couple of questions that I, I wanna know what, how, how do you really plan to work out all the kinks out of this, um, out of this process coming up? I'll give you a chance to think about that too. Uh, number two, we, we've got Act 77 that was passed last fall. I think it was done really haphazardly. And Walter's exactly right. The governor just has now thrown up his hands, you know, that we're getting, we're getting sued. And really it's, it's, it's the administration and Harrisburg responsibility to help us, equip us to run these elections. And I see a lot of ambiguities with, with, uh, legislation that was passed. I don't think it was well thought through at all. I brought forward a dozen, uh, issues that people had, um, weeks before the election. And many were addressed. Some I, I think were, were overlooked or they, um, they, they didn't turn out as well as I was hoping for. And I really think if the election weren't delayed for a few weeks, I think we would have been in real trouble. I, I think we were vastly underprepared. And again, that's, I'm not throwing that responsibility on you. I think there, there's plenty of, um, of fault to be thrown around there, but I think ultimately it, it started in Harrisburg. And we've got a big task here with, um, these, these, um, mail-in ballots. And, uh, the other big question is how many uncounted votes were there? Because a lot of people feel that their, their votes were not counted. And, um, number question, number three, we're, a lot of people have approached me and they're really worried about the vote harvesting we've seen in other states. You know, we see, um, you know, political people dropping off bushels of votes. Um, and the state statute doesn't say that. You're supposed to either mail your own ballot in or drop your ballot off personally at the, at the, um, elections bureau. And that certainly has not happened. It hasn't happened in other states. There's a lot of, uh, data and proof out there that that goes on. And again, we want to protect our elections from the political people. I, I sincerely hope that none of you have agendas that are now sitting on this board because we need a lot of truth out there. We're looking forward to you restoring a lot of hope around here. And we don't want to get sued and we don't want to have protests after election day on whoever wins. And we certainly don't want to be in the nationwide news for not running a, a, a perfect election. Um, so again, don't, don't need to be such a Debbie Downer here, but it's an issue that a lot of people brought forward to me. It, it's weighing on me heavily. And here we are in late July. We've only got a few months left. So, uh, free to, to answer any of those questions now or if you wanna circle back.
I would ask that.
I'd, I'd like to respond to that.
About that and provide us some answers. Uh, as you realize, we've been almost four and a half hours on, on this point. So I think it's.
But, but this is very important, Mr. McKinley.
I understand it's very important, but I think they need time to look at that and, and provide that information that you requested. I think some of that has to take a little.
Quickly, so, so I can make a quick, just a quick response on that as far as Mr. Haas is concerned. And I, and, and we all feel on the board, your frustrations. Um, and we also work very well together, uh, regardless of our party affiliation and our personal, uh, opinions. We strive to do a, a, a good, fair and trustworthy election. And we work with the board and the, and the bureau, uh, very diligently to have that happen. Now there's also a responsibility that goes back onto the voting public. We are always in a situation where we have to scramble for vote, for poll workers. We need more folks to step up. We lost a ton of the poll workers who were traditionally there because they were too old and refused to do it because of the COVID. Now, we also, we, we are, I agree with you. If had the, the primary not been delayed, we would have been indeed. But we also have the experience of the primary. We know where a lot of the weak points are and we can, we can, uh, try to mitigate those. But we need your input and your fat, your, uh, uh, experience to do that. Um, and I would, uh, invite anyone in the public to contact us. We do have a Facebook page as well. Um, with their concerns so that we can bring them up to the bureau and, uh, and, and make these things, uh, make things better for people.
Great. Thank you. Uh, just before we move on, I, you know, I wanna thank, uh, all the members of the board. Uh, you put in a tremendous amount of hours there, particularly right after the election and sorting through many of the ballots that had to be decisions on. And we appreciate all that time. I don't know how everybody did all that. Uh, certainly took a lot of time and a lot of dedication on your part. And to Ms. Tate, we appreciate the fact you stepped up and you're becoming a member of the board. And we look forward for your input also as, you know, the board gets together and works towards the election in November. So thank you very much. Uh, sorry for the lateness of hour, but, uh, it was a topic that we had to discuss.
Mr. McKinley, I just, a quick, I'll, I'll finish up real brief. One of, one of the things I did not get to address with Mr. Olet was the questions that he did for the interview process. And one of the questions that was considerably disturbing, not only to myself, but others, was the question about can you keep the public comment portions to four minutes per citizen? Was kind of disturbing to some of us who attend meetings and we, we, we feel that the public has a right and you keep encouraging everybody to give input. And, and I, I have to say, Peter, you have had a lot of levity for myself and Brian and a couple others who constantly come to meetings because you want our input. Uh, I was just a little bit concerned about that statement about, one of the, one of the questions you asked the chair uh, is how do you do that? And then the other questions that you didn't ask, which were really important, was about the nonpart, one of the things you asked about being nonpartisan. And clearly, if you're on the board of elections, you can't be nonpartisan. As we saw from the vote, it's a, it's a two Republicans and two Democrats vote together all the time. And so I don't think you could do nonpartisan voting on an election board. And so I think that question was kind of unfair, but the biggest question I would ask was, are you a registered voter? You know, that would be my first question. And have you, and obviously questions that were in the charter were questions that should have been asked and were not. So you might want to revisit your questions that you ask your chairpersons if, if you ever have to change that. But I'm sure we'll work on that.
Yeah. And hopefully the board will be together for a while. So, uh, they won't have to go through that process for a little bit. All right. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies from the election group. We appreciate your time. We appreciate your volunteering and putting all that extra effort into the, uh, election process. Uh, going down to.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Uh, thank you. We're going down to the budget. Uh, Mr. Swet, I'd ask you to keep it as brief as possible, uh, but try to hit some of those points that were raised earlier.
Will do on both counts, Mr. Chair. Uh, just wanted to let everyone know that we received the CARES funding, uh, $28,665,567. That was our allocation before we spent a dime. I think one of the questions was, did we have to spend the money first? Nope. It came down from the feds, passed through DCD. That's the money. It is in an account with Pliggett, uh, the council in November 13th to 2018 drafted investment policy, which let Pliggett as one of the potential vendors, no slant on PNC. Uh, Pliggett is handling 59 local governments, including some school districts. So this type of money we thought Pliggett had the experience with, that's where administration put this money. We'll make the budget amendment now that that was passed. Uh, for Mr. Griffith's things, I'll just, I won't give the line items. I'll answer that in an email, but just quickly. Uh, the $343,000 was in the budget. It's in, uh, the elections department in other income. The, the county had spent $1.1 million. That's also in the elections department in 59946. Uh, that was a check to, for the voting machines. And the county is scheduled to receive 60% of 1.6, almost 1.7 million from the state. We have not received that yet. So we got.
4.1 million.
It's, it's, there's actually 1.6 million. And the reason it's 1.6 is because there's part of that, that's actually maintenance. So the county spent 3.1 million and it's only 2.8 that we get the 60% on. So we're gonna get 1.7 and we got the 300,000. So I'll put that all in an email. So Mr. Griffith has it. Uh, Mr. Urban had asked about the, uh, funding for the ARC at the last meeting. That was, that's approximately $10 million on the general fund side, about 14 million all in. We met with the actuary at the last retirement board meeting. And in the general fund, we paid the five, 5.5 million. And we have about that much, a little bit less to pay, which we plan on paying in September. So the general fund's about 72 to 75% of that. I'm not going to go through the individual report, not just because of the lateness of time. At the next meeting, we have to present the media report. So you get a PowerPoint with much more detail of everything that happened from Jan, you know, January to June 30th. So I just want to let everyone know the money came in. We will get the documentation and start reimbursing the county. We have that. We have the right for the investment policy and I'll get Mr. Griffith the email with the GL numbers.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Swet?
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Swet, did you say that 343,000 was in the, uh, under other income in the Bureau of Elections?
That's correct.
Well, I saw it under general government operations.
I'm 99.9% sure. I will double check and give you the GL tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at the, I saw it. It's under general government operation and I forget what the account number was. But my concern was, what is our bond number? Because I would like to possibly get with the office of law to draft a resolution to transfer that money onto the bond. Cause that was what that money was supposed to go towards. So we need to, we need to pull that out of the budget and pay the bond with that.
I'll give you that GL on the email. It's in, uh, Division 95 debt service. I'll list that GL on the email as well. I did see a reference, so I'll give you all the GL numbers.
Yeah, I, and, and I do know that there's, and those documents that the, uh, Pennsylvania Department of State sent the council on Thursday night. Uh, we did get that with those documents. It says what the 1.6 million is coming from. So I appreciate that document being taken care of as well. But my, there was some things in the, real, real briefly I wrote down, maybe you can, off the top of your head, hit me with. Is the, uh, in the, we saw there was a loan, a return of a loan for Market Street Square of $210,000 in account number 1204176, general operation, 445 that 10, which is other income, I believe. Can you explain what that is? Cause our budget is like 14, 1,400 over budget in revenue in that department.
No, I, I, I do remember having that. I know we talked about it with the auditors, but I'd have to do a little bit of research. I can add that to the email tomorrow. I do not know that one off the top of my head.
Yeah, that, that, that's in the revenue. Cause when you go down the, when you go down the sheet, you'll see that there's a spot where we're 1,400 over budget in revenue, which is, you know, when revenue is that high, it, it comes up as a real red flag. So it, when I went out and I looked under New World, it said that we got, yeah, it's 14, 1433. It's other income 44, 44510. Uh, it was like, uh, $214,000 we have in revenue. So if you check that out and let me know what that is. And then also there's a, um, check that out and let me know what that is. And then also, there's a, let me look at my notes here. 30 million in FNB, 30 million in the FNBC account, which was 20, $22,000 in interest. I don't know where that 30 million from FNB came from. I'll send that to you in an email, Brian, if you wouldn't mind.
All right. That money is money that's used at the end of the year to pay the debt service, et cetera, instead of having it sit in the account and earn no interest.
Okay.
Asked a resolution, I believe, that allowed the county to be able to invest that money over a short period of time, and then it would generate a little bit of revenue. And last year was much better than this year as far as the interest rates. So the revenue probably won't be as much as what we anticipated.
Oh, that's, that's helpful. And then the last, the last thing I have is in, under Road and Bridge Income, I see reimbursement for an accident of 21,115. I was wondering, is that, was that something that happened in a year, years prior that we could use, you possibly transfer that money out of that account? Because that's obviously an insurance reimbursement for a claim that was put into the county. That's, gives us like, and there's another one in there, for somebody to hit a light pole for 6, $6,500 in the Road and Bridge Income. That possibly, if those accidents were already paid for, and that damage was already repaired in a prior year, it's already been paid. So we can use that revenues as a, you know, maybe build up our capital plan, or whatever we need to use that money for. So if you could write a note to yourself, maybe explain that to me, that would be helpful as well.
I have a note. If you wouldn't mind sending an email tomorrow, I'll add all the accounts you asked for in those three or four things as well.
Absolutely perfect. Thanks, Brian. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. The capital plan, you know, this has been on our work session for, since June, I believe. And we're at the point where we have to approve it before September 1. Currently, I've had no inquiries from anyone, or any kind of commentary. So at this point, it'll be on our voting session for the first meeting in August. So if we have any issues, we still have one more meeting that we could address that, that capital plan. But we have to do that before September 1, or it becomes approved as submitted.
Yeah. And Mr. McGinley, briefly on that, and one of the things I've done, I guess we, we make the amendments at our voting session, obviously, but my question's.
Good if we had the potential amendments, so we could put them together, get them out to people, so everybody be able, have an opportunity to look at them. So when we come to the voting meeting, you know, it's not a surprise.
Right. All right. Well, you know what I'll do is I'll try and draft my, my, my amendments for it. I.
All you have to do really is, you don't have to draft a lot. All you really have to do is list the amendments and where they're found, and then present a capital budget.
Okay.
That would be key. And then, you know, if we need something more, we'll work on it.
All right. Very good. I'll, I'll do that this, hopefully this week. And if I have a question, I'll give you a call.
That's fine. No problem. Anyone else, you're more than welcome to submit anything. Number three was part of our executive session earlier this evening. And going forward, that will be on our voting session two weeks hence. Down to number four, the people who are the chairs, if they would just comment if they have something that is new information, please. Other than that, we'll try to get through that. We still have the Flood Protection Authority item to address it. Okay, Act 13, Mr. Vogel.
I'm planning to meet the second week of August. Haven't finalized the date of time yet.
Okay. When you get that, you'll provide that information, right? And we'll get that on the calendar. ABC, Mr. Perry?
Nothing to report, Chair.
Thank you. Budget, an audit. We're going to have a meeting Tuesday. That would be August the 4th at 4:30. Well, hopeful we'll have several submissions from the RFP for the county budget going forward. As everyone's aware, the current auditor will complete the 2019 budget. That's the fourth year, and the charter requires, requires us to get a new auditing firm going forward. So this is a process that we started with the RFP was out. Because of the fact the county's been somewhat closed down for the past week and a half, we're still waiting on some things. But I expect that everything was in the mail. We'll probably get things tomorrow morning. We do have one submission so far that has been dropped off here. And hopefully, once we have that, the committee will get information electronically. And then Tuesday, we'll begin the process as far as the committee's work. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, legislative for Mr. Chair, we still need to do part two of the Rain Tax Roundtable. We hosted that just before the COVID, so we'll be looking at putting that together. And I'll talk, definitely talk to Walter and Steve, what we can do as far as meeting times for our next legislative committee meeting in the next couple of weeks. Also, we're happy to be the conduit for these election matters. If the Bureau of Elections or the county or whoever needs to take issues to Harrisburg, that we need support from our delegation, we're happy to do that. And seriously, I see this as a real problem coming down the pike. So happy to go to Bath, if any other council members have any concerns legislatively, what we need out of either Harrisburg or Washington, you know, let us know.
Thank you. Ms. McGarrett?
Uh, yes. We are looking to have a meeting the second week of August. Just trying to nail down the exact date. And the committee was able to get the resolution passed for the minimum bids for the repository sale properties. So that was an accomplishment on the last meeting agenda.
Yes. Correct. Ms. Houck, you have two.
Yeah, nothing on strategic initiatives. Code review. I unfortunately had to cancel the last meeting, but we will schedule something. I will connect with you two, and we'll set something up for the, within the next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, still haven't, it's been very difficult since the COVID to get momentum. So we haven't met, and we'll be looking at recovering with that soon.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel?
Yes, first meeting will be August 3 at 6, at 6:00 PM.
Okay. And we'll, that, we'll have that on our calendar also. Riverfront Park, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Nothing. I'm good. I was just going to say, we just finalized that today. So we'll get the agenda up and everything.
Good. Riverfront Parks, I have had no communication with anyone in that regard, and I've had no communication regards to the Pling Township Tiff Group, the Flood Protection Authority. Just a little background here. This information came forward on Thursday afternoon, very late on Thursday afternoon. I was not aware of it until Friday morning. I contacted Ms. Parich, and then I contacted the Flood Protection Authority to get some information on Friday. Did not get the information on Friday. On Monday morning, I again contacted the Flood Protection Authority, and I was forward some information in that regard. And you can see the resolution and the narrative on page two that talks about the project. You'll notice that the deadline is August 12, and that will be after we have our next meeting. But they will be able to submit the application and tell the people on the application that there'll be a resolution forthcoming. And you notice the project is expected to be $350,000, and there's no match required from the county. And then the pictures are pictures that, as you can see from the dates in the pictures, back in 2011, when the flooding occurred around the courthouse and the Verminsky Building and, and the park gate next to the Verminsky Building. And you can see, that's what this project would address, would be to stem that, that flooding, so that there would be no damage to the Verminsky Building and the park gate. I put it on the work session, so we can at least get the chance to look at it. Any discussion or any questions would be more than welcome.
I would just say, this is Linda, in the now, therefore, section, it needs to either say that the council approves or does approve, but it shouldn't say does approves. So maybe we can make that correction. Okay?
I agree. Anyone else? Any questions about the project or the county's participation? Okay. Thank you. Public comment, please. Members of the public who would like to address council at this time?
Mr. McGinley.
Yes, Mr. Manta.
Okay. I think there's somebody just ahead of you, Mr. Manta. Who's that, please?
Mr. Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, I'll be brief. First of all, I heard the discussion between Councilman Griffith, Councilman Urban, and Vice Chairman Olet, the Election Board. And also, I want to address what the solicitor, solicitor, I believe, Crocamo said about the management in charge of who appoints employees to the election office. All three of them are wrong in their assertion, because it's not Title 25, nor is it under the administrative, county administrative code, nor is it under the county home rule charter that regulates what the election board does. It's the state election code, specifically Act 320 of 1937, to be specific, Section 3, which regulates what the election board does. And it says it in plain English. So it's not, it's, there's no ambiguity, there's no nuance, no dichotomy, nothing. It says it in plain English. So for anybody to say that there is, you know, because you have, obviously, state law supersedes county administrative code, county home rule charter, because it is a law that pertains to the, all the counties of the state. So, you know, for their, how the election boards are run and regulated. So the election code of the state supersedes all of that. So I just want to point that out. And also, with regards to what was stated with pertaining to the financing issues, I think that is also included in the election code. I have also a question with regards to the tower that Mr. Pedri said in the voting session pertaining to Freeland, because I was on the Water, Hazleton City Authority that renewed the lease for the, for the 911 tower in, in the Hazleton area. So I was curious as to know why there's going to be another tower, 911 tower, put there? Because when Mr. Rosenkrantz made his presentation about the, you know, the 911 upgrade, the digital 911 project, he, he didn't say any new towers were going up in the Hazleton area, other than the ones that were previously there. Maybe I missed something on that respect. So I just wanted to know what the range was, you know, as far as with the current towers that are there, and why a new one would be needed to be put up. That's basically what I, I, the two concerns I have. And I, I hope that you can address these for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I can't address you once about election law. Mr. Pedri.
The election, or solicitors, excuse me, sorry.
Mr. Pedri, maybe you can find out that information about the tower idol. I think Mr. Rosenkrantz probably has that information more so than.
Sounds good.
Okay. So if you could, that would appreciate it. And Mr. DeLuca or Ms. Crocamo?
What, what do you want us to respond to?
Uh, I think Mr. Raybo cited state law that defines the roles and responsibilities of the election board.
The state election code, Act 320 of 1937.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Thank you.
It's codified in Title 25, but I don't know specifically what he's, what he's getting at. It's the county code, state law, that it's codified at Title 25. There are different acts that the legislature passes that are, that are codified in different titles. I really, I mean, to sit here and debate with a member of the public on a legal nuance, I'm not really comfortable with. But does he have a?
Somebody could just look it up and see what the status is. And have a debate at this point doesn't make.
No, I'm not having a debate. It was just pointing out of the.
No, you actually, you said we were all wrong. And if you want, send me, send me whatever information you have. We could, I could correct you offline instead of having a conversation right now and taking up everyone's time.
Oh, I'm not taking.
Your email address, if you want to send me. There, there are things that we learned in law school that I don't think we have time to go through tonight before, to, to really get into detail about this. But you could email me. I've all, I've given you my cell phone number. We don't have to do this online. So just send me what you got.
Okay. That's fine.
Other members of the public. I think Mr. Manta, you were trying to speak there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I have a question about the flood program. Okay?
Go ahead.
I lived, I lived in Squawsville pretty much all my life. And in Squawsville, the county had nine ponding areas after the 72 flood that the county owned and the county maintained. Andy Burla was in office when this all came about. God bless Andy Burla. Mr. Burla had all of those county ponding areas taken care of by the borough. So now, my question is, to the county, how could the county get rid of those ponding areas and sell them to Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority when it was property that was taken under eminent domain from the people in the town, and now they're selling it to Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority? I, I'd like somebody from the, the Flood Protection Program to answer that question, if, if possible, because.
I think that's where that question should be directed. And Mr. Bellman is the proper person to respond to that.
And is he on board there with the, with the Flood Protection?
He's the executive director of the Flood Protection Authority.
Are you going to have him at a meeting, or?
No. No, because the responsibility for the levee system falls with the Flood Protection Authority. They do have monthly meetings that are on, they're publicly advertised.
But I thought I heard you say before something about you wanted someone from the Flood Protection Program to be there?
No, I did not say that, Mr. Manta. I'm sorry if you misinterpreted. No, I didn't say that. But I, you can address that question with the Flood Protection Authority. And like I say, they have monthly public meetings. So it's open to the public to participate.
And then, then to back Mr. Haas, I think we have to have all the county council people look in the mirror and say, wait a minute, let's help the county people by establishing another meeting with these politicians, so that we could eliminate this rainwater tax. Believe me, Mr. McGinley, as, as true as I sit here, this is going to hurt the valley more than COVID. Because people are going to pay that after the COVID is done.
Yeah, I think we are aware of your feelings, Mr. Manta. I think you've expressed them several times, and quite passionately at times.
So I mean, Harry, Harry has a good idea.
Okay.
That this meeting started.
Talk to Mr. Haas, he's the head of Legislative Committee.
Thank you.
Members of the public, please.
Brian Shiner?
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
Well, first of all, to clear things up for Mr. Manta, the Flood Protection Authority meeting is the third Tuesday of the month at 1 o'clock.
There you go.
So he can take. Brian, what, where's, is that online, Brian?
Yes, it is. LCFPA.com.
Yeah, text it to me later. Thanks.
When it comes, when it comes to the Blighted Property Review Committee, I believe Mr. Haas' term expired on July 25.
Yeah, it's, I think it's July or August. I think you're correct.
It's, well, I'm looking at it on the website. It says July 25, 2020.
The website.
And then it also says, pardon me?
I think the website is correct.
Yeah. There, there is, there is a problem though. It says Andrew Holzer's term expired on December 31, 2023. So that needs to be corrected, because he was just reappointed. So it doesn't, it's not expired, it expires. But that, yeah. Um, but that, yeah, the issue with Mr. Haas' chair, I think, needs to be corrected because we had a problem with, uh, two of the members being, uh, uh, expired terms for quite some time. The main issue I have, uh, is the nine-one-one system. I was very dismayed to hear that we plan on encrypting the calls. With everything going on in this country and even here locally, moving to encrypt all the police calls, I think, is a huge mistake. I think you're asking for problems. When the discussion came up about moving to digital and would they be encrypted, we were told it could be, but it wasn't necessarily planned, and now we find out it is. I feel that we're, we're, we're stifling the public. I feel that if there's an issue that the, uh, uh, emergency people need to, to discuss privately, they can always switch to an encrypted channel as they do now. But I think the initial calls coming out need to continue as they are, so the average person with the scanner, the radios, and so on can hear what's going on. I feel that's a right that we have. We pay for this system. Every person, uh, be, between tax money, between the, uh, um, the charges on our phones, our cell phones, our landlines, everything, we pay for this. And to exclude the public from the initial call and what's going on, I think is a grave mistake, and it needs to be stopped. I don't know if council has the ability to do that, but I think they should at least look into it and do something on this issue before it turns into something ugly in this area, as it has in many other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public?
I got, I got a comment, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Wait, I, I'm gonna check and see if there's anybody else with Mr. Haas, then you, then you'll be more than welcome. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Haas, you got two minutes.
Hey, first of all, I got two minutes.
Two minutes.
Uh, first of all, Mr. Shiner, thanks so much. It's why they pay you the big bucks. Uh, Mr. Chair, if we could put that on for the next agenda for reappointment for Blight Property Review Committee, and, um, you know, also for the, with the database, the ABCs, uh, for those members that are eligible for appointment, um, if that's the case. And, um, second was very dismayed to see in The Times Leader, one of their op-eds about, uh, the coronavirus with Judge James Berry, uh, regardless of what happened, wish him the best and, and a recovery. But, you know, I, I talked about, at, at a council meeting, about not having a cure for a virus. And, um, you know, the, the paper said there's a cure for the flu, and there just isn't. And, you know, for chickenpox, there's a vaccine, but people still get shingles. So I, I, again, I, I see more and more of this during my eight years of council, that, um, I really hope the local news media doesn't follow the track of the national news. And unfortunately, even these, these op-ed pieces are increasingly irrelevant anyway, because everybody's blowing up Facebook with nonsense. And, um, again, just a, a comment on The Times, and unfortunately, I'd be a part of it again, um, doesn't make this job any easier when you can't have really legitimate debate about stuff. And, um, that was poor form. Don't appreciate that. And I hope going forward, we can really have more positive discussions, like we've certainly had in the past on this board. We want all, what's all best for all the people. And, um, the media is a part, it's that, 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 uh, fourth pillar of government that it's been sorely lacking. So, um, thank you for the two minutes.
Okay. Very good. And, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Sandra.
Sandra? Waller? All favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? None heard. Please stay safe and healthy. Uh, as many people said tonight, we're in, uh, very interesting times at the very least. And obviously, uh, it's very important for everyone to try to do their best to follow whatever health guidelines, deadlines possible, so that, you know, we can work our way through this particular situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Yep.
Take care.
Take care.
Good night.